This meeting is called to order. Good evening and welcome to the City of Boynton Beach City Commission Meeting. Today's Tuesday, November 7th, 2023, and the time is now 6:00 PM. Before we proceed, I'd like to remind all those in attendance that the rules of decorum will be strictly enforced in accordance with our city's decorum ordinance and Florida statute 871.01. Officials must first be addressed by me, the chair, and not interrupt any other speakers. Public comments must be addressed to the commission as a whole and not to any particular individual or individuals on the dais or in the audience. Insults, personal attacks, and similar acts are strictly prohibited. Physical demonstrations such as stamping of feet or yelling are likewise strictly prohibited. Disruptive behaviors will receive a warning and should disruptions persist, the sergeant-at-arms will be directed to take appropriate measures. If you are asked to leave, you will not be readmitted to the chambers. At this point, I'm going to turn to our city clerk. If you could please begin the roll call.
Mayor Pat Serra?
Here.
Vice Mayor Turkin?
Present.
Commissioner Cruz?
Here.
Commissioner Hay?
Here.
Commissioner Kelly?
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, ma'am. Our invocation for this evening will be led by Pastor Jeff Kelly of First Baptist Church of Boynton and immediately followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Vice Mayor Turkin. Let's all stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Pastor?
It's an honor to be here today. If you would join me in prayer.
Mike, please.
The honor to be here today if you'd join me with me in prayer. Almighty God and Creator, we come before you today and thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Here in Boynton Beach, we thank you for the rich diversity that makes up our community and how even from this, we're reminded some of who you are and how you created all people in our differences and uniquenesses, and you made this world good. Father, Scripture teaches us that you have established civil authorities to promote peace and order and justice and to be a rewarder of those who do good. So therefore, I pray today for our mayor and for the various levels of city officials and in particular for this assembled council. I am asking that you would grant them favor, oh God. Would you give them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times? Would you give them a sense of welfare and the true needs of our community? Would you give them a heart for justice and rightness? Would you give them confidence in what is good and fitting? Would you give them the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement? Would you give them personal peace in their own lives and joy in their task? Father, we pray for the agenda set before them today and ask that you would give assurance of what you deem as best and what would serve this community and this city of Boynton Beach, which we call home. We pray for your kindness, for you are a good and faithful God, and it is in your most blessed name that we pray.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Vice Mayor. We are now going to turn to agenda approval, additions, deletions, and corrections to the agenda. I will begin on my left with Commissioner Amy Cully. Commissioner?
I do not have any, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Hay?
No, I do not have any.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I have two, actually three. First one, I would like to see if staff could give me an update on, you know, there was, I guess there's, I've been approached by several city employees about some concerns with pay and payroll. And so I don't know if we can get an update from the city manager's office or someone so that can be acknowledged. And then...
Go ahead. I'll chime in after all three are heard.
And then the second one, and also, if it's okay with my colleagues, I'd like to hear from Jackie Smith. I understand that we had received seven figures in federal grant funding for public safety. So I'd like to hear a little bit more about that, if that's possible. And then for future agenda items, I would like to add, if there's consensus, discussion for the, to create an RFP for the central parcel next to the arts schoolhouse. I know that that was originally designed in our master plan for town square to be a hotel. And so I want to get that conversation going. If there's some consensus there.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Let me address the three points. The first item you mentioned employee concerns about pay. Based on what I've heard, it sounds like an administrative matter, and I don't feel comfortable it coming before us. Have you had the conversation with the city manager already? Is that something that can be privately dealt?
Yeah, we can. I haven't had like a brief update or, you know, I'm just bringing this up.
If you're seeking an update, I would recommend just reaching out to him first. City manager?
I'll address that in private. And I know we did have some issues. We're working through those. So it had a lot to do with our comp class study, and we had quite a few issues coming together at one time, specifically with holiday pay, vacations, and some sick time issues with employees dealing with public safety. You are correct. And I'll address the specifics on a sidebar.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that the city employees here understand and know that, you know, at least for me, that we have their backs. And I want to make sure that everyone feels good coming to work.
As for the second item you had mentioned about us receiving grant monies, which I think is wonderful news. What I'm not sure of is if the city manager is even prepared today to discuss that or would you like to come back next meeting to provide an update?
I think as far as the specifics, we can come back. But as, I don't, if it's the bodies, I guess, what we're looking for is employee recognition. I know we do have Jackie Smith. She's here. So we can, we don't have to bring up the specifics, but I know she's here to be recognized, I guess, as far as the cops grant is concerned. So I don't, I don't think staff has a problem with that. I know Chief DeJulie had reached out to me whenever the grant initially came in, so.
Well, Commissioner, I'll let you chime in in a moment. But if you could just wait one moment. I wasn't aware of this. I wasn't informed. I'm very happy for Ms. Smith. I think she's doing a great job. So thank you for organizing that. But I just want to make sure I understood because that sounds different from what was brought up. He's, correct me if I'm wrong, Vice Mayor. It sounded like you were asking for an update on the grants.
Yeah, well, I was...
Is that the same thing?
Yeah, same thing.
Oh. Okay, so...
The grant's not ready yet. The grant's going to be ready probably in either next commission meeting or the one following. Not the specifics of it.
Okay, so today we'll be recognizing Ms. Smith, and then next meeting, you'll be prepared with that information.
Right, it's pending approval from the commission, but we did get approval from the federal government for it.
Okay, all right. Before we amend the agenda to add that on, is there consensus from my colleagues?
One last one. Yeah, this one is important. I would like to get an update from the city manager's office in the line item in the agenda about where we're at with our appropriation requests submitted to the state. I think that's important. And I know, you know, we're getting down to the wire.
No, I'm fully prepared for that.
Okay.
So the request presented before this board is just an update from the city manager regarding the grants that we are receiving for public safety as well as for the appropriation requests and where that is today. That's how I understood your comments.
Yes, and then the...
So before, yes, we'll handle that in a moment. Let's just ascertain consensus from the body.
I don't know if that would be, I think, I don't know, the second one would be appropriate as I believe it's part of the consent agenda. If we're referring to the same thing, I think it's on the consent agenda six E, F, and G.
Let's take a look. Item six E?
The public safety grants that we talked about during the meeting.
Are those different city managers?
Yeah, correct. Those are different. Those are dealing with the occupant protection grant that we got, and I believe it's on identity theft and fraud.
Would those be brought back up to commission once the process is completed?
I believe this is authorizing, I think we've already got approval for those. This is just authorizing the chief, and I want the mayor to sign off, accepting.
All right, so let's go back to the original question. A proposal has been made, and I need to ascertain consensus to even add that onto the list. Counsel?
Please do that. I do have one notification.
So let's hear from everybody first, and then we'll address one item at a time. All right, so the question is, the request, I should say, is to add to the future agenda for next meeting an update on the legislative appropriations and where we stand on that.
So that would actually be this meeting, and the city manager said he's fully prepared for that.
City manager, is that correct?
The deadline will have passed by the time at our next meeting.
Yes, we've submitted our appropriations.
But are you prepared to speak on it today?
Yes, I am.
All right, so that is for today and for the public safety grants for next meeting.
Correct.
All right, I have no issue with that. Those are updates. Are there any concerns, comments from my colleagues on those two requests? Okay, all right. All right, we have consensus. The third item that was proposed by a vice mayor here is putting together an RFP for the central parcel. Before we direct, you know, before we go in that direction, Vice Mayor, I would recommend that we have a discussion first because the route may not necessarily be an RFP, right?
Yeah, that's what I meant. Just to get, yeah, a discussion to identify what we want to do with that.
So I'm kind of glad you brought that up because that's something that I had privately brought up with staff as well. They had counseled me and said that they are working on something, and they wanted to, they asked me to wait a little bit. So I would recommend that, I'm not sure what the status is. So I would recommend that, well, let me hear from staff. Are there any concerns if we have a discussion on the central parcel two, one or two, three meetings from now? You tell me if that's something you're all prepared.
Yeah, we'll be prepared.
There was a thumbs up from staff?
Yeah, Amanda Radigan, she just gave us a thumbs up. We'll be prepared.
Okay, so like I said, it was a conversation I wanted to have anyways. But perfect. All right, but before we do that, let me turn to my colleagues for consensus. Is there consensus for adding a discussion item? Go ahead, Commissioner, yes.
I don't have an objection to it, but I'm seeing too many of these add-on at the last minute without having the opportunity to do the research and find out about it. I don't feel comfortable in all of these additions to the agenda without the proper procedure of looking into it. And that's my question to staff. So I hope that when we do the agenda review, and I hope that each one of you do that, you would bring these things out and put them on the future agenda so that we can all give our proper input to it.
Commissioner Hay, I appreciate your comments. On that note, because I have similar concerns, on that note, I'm very much looking forward to, if you look under our current future agenda, one of the things I propose is the adoption of local rules of procedure. And I think that will be one of the things we'll address then.
That needs to be moved up.
I couldn't agree more.
We need to have that discussion.
Absolutely, absolutely. All right, so were there any objections to a discussion regarding the central parcel? This isn't pertaining to town square, city manager. And then we'll, I need a final yes or no from my colleagues. Final comment, city manager.
No, we'll be, we'll be ready to actually discuss in two, three. That's fine, as long as the body gives us consensus.
That's what I'm trying to do. So let me find out. Commissioner Cruz, let's start with you. Were there any objections? You're okay with this conversation?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, Commissioner Hay and Commissioner Kelly? All right.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Let's move on. Commissioner Cruz?
Oh, no, I'll wait until we go around to add something to.
We are.
Okay, sorry.
I've already gone through Commissioner...
Okay, so I'm, okay, it's my turn.
All of these to my left, Vice Mayor, then you're the last one. Well, me, I'm the last.
So I wanted, I reached out to the city manager's office a couple of days ago to add community support funds. I wanted to add $500 to the Alzheimer's Association as well as $500 to Eat Better, Live Better. And I wanted to see if I can add that to the, I mean, I hate to add it like this, but I, that's what I was told to.
Let me just reiterate that so I have it done correctly in my notes. You are making a request to allocate your community support funds in the amount of $500 to the Alzheimer's Association, $500 to Eat Better, Live Better. Is that correct?
Yes, Mayor.
Catherine, did you get that? Okay.
Okay, so personally, I have no objections. But before we amend the agenda, I need consensus from my colleagues. Vice Mayor, you're comfortable with it? All right, we have head nods across the board. So we will address those two additional requests today. All right?
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Counsel, I know you were waiting patiently. Thank you for that. Let's turn to you.
With regard to 11C, that was on a previous agenda regarding full-time commission. I have asked that that item be moved or pulled at this time until I have sufficient time to research that.
Okay, thank you. So, all right. So if nothing else from my colleagues, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
They'll move.
We have a motion. I don't know who made the motion. It was very quick. Let's, I think that was Vice Mayor made the motion. I heard a second from Commissioner Hay. All those in favor of the motion to amend the agenda as discussed, say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes, the agenda is therefore amended. We are now moving on to informational items by members of the city commission. City commissioners, city disclose any informational items to the public. Let's tell, let's begin on my right, Commissioner Cruz. Informational items.
Disclosure, I received an email and a text message from Bradley Miller regarding item 8C. That would be it for me.
Let me find that, the item 8C. I see that. All right, thank you, Vice Mayor.
I also received communication from Bradley Miller in regards to 8C. And then 8B, I received, received some communication, had some dialogue with Barbara Reedy, Jessica Ferguson, and Mike Barwess for 8B regarding the field. And then I did attend Pirate Fest. I thought that was amazing. Guys really knocked it out of the park. A lot of great feedback. You know, super good, super good time. Glad we got it back. And, you know, I can't wait to see what happens next year. Also, dog park, great success. I know the weather didn't, you know, didn't do the best for us, but I felt like it was a pretty good turnout. So Justin, thank you so much. I know you spearheaded that, so I really appreciate you for that. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor. We'll turn now to Commissioner Hay for informational items.
Yeah, I have no disclosures, but I do have several informational items. I had the pleasure of attending the Florida redevelopment conference in Ponto, Virgery, Florida. I'd like to say that it was a tremendous success. I wish others could have been there. To share with you, I brought back some of the literature. And if you notice on the front of this is MLK building that Centennial developed. And the people, the CRA of Boynton and this commission and all the citizens can really stick your chest out because Boynton was highly recognized. Every time they had us on the screen as people walked into the big gala fair, this picture was up on the screen. As they gave out an award, they popped this back up again, and they talked about this. This won the Presidential Award for the State of Florida. We should be proud of the staff that we have and had here in Boynton Beach CRA. People were asked in questions, how did you do this? How did you do that? And our people, Bonnie and I must say that tweet was there at her own expense, and they were asking her all types of questions. And she would just fire back, and it was really great fun. You could look at this, that's our building, okay? I'd like to say also that I attended the gala of the Boca and Delray Chamber of Commerce at the Boca Hotel. That was a tremendous outing and event also, the first Friday. Really good band, and the crowd was, I guess there was really hungry for entertainment because it was crowded. I would like to, I know I'll probably get hit on the head for this one, but as I looked around, I saw big dogs that were exceptionally large. I mean, you know, some of these pit bulls and Great Danes and everything else. I don't mind a little smaller dog, but, you know, me and dogs, we don't always get along. And I did have one to growl at me, and that was it. I was out of there. But anyway, great activity. The Pirate Fest, absolutely great again. I'm glad to see that return. A lot of good comments back from that. And I did have the opportunity to attend the South Tech Honor Student for the special kids. They, well, not special kids, they are special in the sense that they have issues that they had to drop out of their regular school. But now with this graduation, they are now able to go back to their regular school, and that was a great activity. I had to do a little speaking, so I made you guys feel good. The veterans, the Wounded Veterans Gala up at PGA National was outstanding. I didn't, it was a bidding fundraiser, and every time I bid it, someone outbid me, even though my bid was among the first. But that was a great activity, and it's great to see so many veterans. There was one young man there who was 99 years old, and he spoke with tears in his voice and in his eyes. So that was a great activity. The, this morning, I had the pleasure at 9:00 AM, kind of earlier for me. I went up to the Palm Beach County Commissioners' meeting. They honored the Omega Sapphire fraternity for the work that they have done here in Boynton Beach. They have repaired, painted, fixed up over 22 homes here in Boynton Beach. And they were recognized at the county commissioner's office given a, I think it was a proclamation for their work that they have done. They are currently trying to get, working with Andrew to adopt MLK Boulevard from Seacrest to US1. They're going to keep it clean. They're going to be cleaning it up once a month, whatever their schedule is. So I think that's great. So we have a lot of good things happening in our community, and I just say we want to keep up the good works. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Hay. We're going to turn now to Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have two disclosures. I did have an opportunity to speak to Bradley Miller with regard to 8C and D. I did get an email, but I didn't have a chance to speak to Brian Casey with regard to 8B. And then I did just want to kind of piggyback on what my colleague said about some of our recent events. And I really wanted to just recognize and acknowledge our events team, Gabby and Melanie and Sienna and our marketing, Chelsea and Barbara and Public Works and PD and FIRE. They were all out there for Pirate Fest, and it was, it was a great success. My daughter and I are still sporting our fairy hair. We, we just had a great time, and I, you know, the city staff and also the CRA staff were out there, both, you know, both days, working really hard to market our city, market our downtown businesses and really just environment for our residents. And so I just want to thank city staff for all their hard work. It was amazing. And then our Parks Department, I know Vice Mayor Turkin talked about it, the opening of the dog park at JC Park. You know, we've seen a couple of, or one other city dog park go up in the city, and this one just shoots it out of the park. Staff did an amazing job designing and executing that dog park. And if you have big and little dogs, bring them out there because it really is, they really did a great job on that. So those are my two disclosures. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. As for myself, I do want to disclose that I had a conversation with Bradley Miller, item 8C and D. Outside of that, that concludes my informational items. Except I do want to just remind my colleagues, I was, my understanding is the city attorney has spoken to all of you. We are implementing a new process today. So when we get to the public hearing section of the agenda, we will have a more thorough disclosure of any ex parte communications, right? We just want to be more thorough about our disclosures, so. About that, okay? All right, thank you so much, everyone. That concludes informational items. We're going to turn now to announcements, community, and special events and presentations. The first one is an announcement of our oceanfront bark Boynton Beach's dog potty on the beach being hosted by the Recreation and Parks Department on Saturday, November 18th, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. I'll, I'll give it a moment for staff to bring up that picture so the public can see it. Again, it is November 18th. It's Saturday from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM at Oceanfront Park located at 6415 North Ocean Boulevard. This is the first of four scheduled events being held, the third Saturday of each month through February. This event is free for all well-behaved licensed dogs and their owners and includes food trucks, vendors, and pet-friendly giveaways. Dogs will be allowed off-leash in a designated fenced area. Parking at Oceanfront Park is free for the duration of the event for all beach patrons. More information can be found on the city website. The next announcement is about the City Boynton Beach Veterans Day Ceremony event. It is being hosted by the Boynton Beach Veterans Task Force and the City Boynton Beach Recreation and Parks Department at Tom Kaiser USN Boynton Beach Veterans Memorial Park, which is located at 411 North Federal Highway. It is, it is on Saturday, November 11th. Is that the Saturday? It is the Saturday, November 11th, starting at 11:00 AM. The ceremony will honor and recognize all individuals that have served in the United States Armed Forces. For more information, again, we encourage you to visit our city's website. The next item is a proclamation, Veterans and Military Families Appreciation Month. This proclamation will be read and presented by our Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Turkin, for November 2023 as Veterans and Military Families Appreciation Month. This proclamation will be accepted by Nicholas Cannon from the Wounded Veterans Relief Fund. Vice Mayor, if you could do us the honor and read it into the record.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the United States has always stood as a beacon of opportunity, freedom, and promise. And whereas each November, the military community celebrates America's veterans and military families in an effort to convey respect for their services and sacrifice. Whereas our nation's communities must engage in ways to serve those who serve. And whereas as we approach this season of Thanksgiving, we send our gratitude to the spouses, partners, children, caregivers, and survivors of our service members and veterans for their selfless sacrifice on behalf of the nation. And whereas presidents and others have called upon Americans to honor military families through private actions and public service for tremendous contributions they make in support of our nation. And whereas the City of Boynton Beach would like to present this proclamation to Nicholas Cannon, who fought in the global war on terror between 2013 and 2019 and represents the Wounded Veterans Relief Fund. And whereas the City of Boynton Beach would like to recognize all city employees that are veterans. And now that, and now therefore, we, Typen Serra, Mayor, and Thomas Turkin, Vice Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2023 as National Veterans and Military Families Appreciation Month. A witness whereof, we have here and to, set my hand because of seal of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, to be affixed at Boynton Beach, Florida, the 7th day of November 2023. So I'm going to walk this down, and then I'd like to ask anyone in the public who is either a veteran, city employees, veteran, or a military family that maybe has lost someone, you know, that served, to please join us at the front.
This thing on. Can y'all hear me back there? Um, first off, Veterans Day, uh, it's a very emotional day for me. Um, my name is Nicholas Cannon. I represent the Wounded Veterans Relief Fund, the Commission, Boynton Beach. I want to thank you guys for the unbelievable, unbelievable support that you guys have done, not just through this month, but through this year, um, and throughout history. Commissioners, thank you guys specifically for your support, especially for the ones that attended our gala on Saturday. Hopefully, it was, um, a great experience for you guys, and we did raise a lot of money to support the veterans of Boynton Beach and throughout the entire state of Florida. Specifically, Vice Mayor Thomas Turkin, um, you are not only a leader in your community, but a leader for our country. Your service not only for Boynton Beach, but as well as our country, uh, is applaudable. So I'd like to take a moment to thank you specifically for everything that you do. Um, veterans, thank you. This community thanks you. The state of Florida thanks you, and our country thanks you. Um, for everybody, the veterans, we wouldn't have the freedom without all of you guys sitting here today. Uh, yesterday, uh, excuse me, Saturday, uh, I received news that a, uh, a reservist in the Air Force was driving to Patrick Air Force Base to report to duty and unfortunately died in a car accident. Um, as tragic as that was, what the community did was to step in and started painting the house of the family members, um, of the individual that was lost. And I bring this up only to bring attention to the fact that veterans not only need your help, not only throughout the month of November, but every single day throughout the year. We need the help of not only your community, not only the state, but also the federal government and everybody in between. Veterans issues are American issues. They're our issues. We lose too many veterans a day to things like suicide. It's a tough subject to, to bring up, but it's happening every single day. We all know this, and these are the fights that we need to take care of. We have got to protect our brothers and sisters that allow us every single day to have this conversation. So I challenge all of you, as well as the commission and the public, to, to take a step forward, to reach out to your veteran friends, check on them, make sure they're okay. The fight at home is just as important to fight overseas. I promise you that. Uh, again, Vice Mayor, thank you so much for your leadership. Mayor, you as well, all of you that attended, uh, the WVRF Gala, uh, it meant the world. I promise you, your continued support will save veterans' lives. So again, veterans, thank you for allowing us to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. We're gonna move on to the next item on the agenda, which is item three D, Historic Resources Preservation Board Annual Report. My understanding is that the Chair of that board is present, and will be giving a presentation. I'm gonna ask, um, based on your slides, it looks like you'll get it done in ten, twelve minutes. That'll leave three to five minutes of questions and comments for my colleagues. So please introduce yourself when you're ready, and I'll also keep track of the time.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor.
Good evening.
You're making me do this? Okay. Wait, wait, wait. Tell me again.
All right.
Good evening, and good evening, Mayor and Commission. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Barbara Reedy, and I chair your, um, Historic Resources Preservation Board. Um, Manny, if you can hear me, could you run the movie now, please? I have a, a special treat for you. This is a public, um, announcement that we put together in twenty sixteen to give a brief overview of the committee and what it is. I think Manny heard me.
All right. I'm gonna pause the time until that gets going.
Here we go. It's a short movie.
... two thousand and sixteen. This short presentation highlights the many successes of the City of Boynton Beach Historic Preservation Program. Established in two thousand and eleven, the award-winning program has generated significant grant funding and donated services, boosted heritage tourism, and received state recognition. Property owners were first made aware of the program through the publication of three educational brochures financed by the Boynton Beach Historical Society and the National Trust for Historic Preservation. The brochures outline the benefits of historic preservation and explain the workings of the new program. The first priorities for staff were establishing Historic Resources Preservation Board, preparing a set of design guidelines, and applying for certified local government certification, which would open up funding opportunities. As interest in the program increased, significant historic sites in the city were added to the Boynton Beach Register of Historic Places. There are currently eight sites on the Boynton Beach Register and two sites on the National Register. The award-winning Heritage Education Program utilizes modern technology to provide information on the city's history and has been fully funded through non-matching grants. Phase one established downtown and cemetery heritage trails with information boards and trail brochures. The boards and brochures contain QR codes which link users to an interactive website when scanned with a mobile device. The online content provides further site information, interactive maps, and details of burials in the city cemeteries. Phase two of the education program established a cultural resources mobile application that includes information on over one hundred and seventy cultural sites throughout the city. Work is just about to start on phase three of the program, which will establish an interactive website focusing on the city's black history. The city has also partnered with Florida Atlantic University to undertake a ground-penetrating radar survey of Barton Memorial Park Cemetery. All of the work in this undertaking was undertaken free of charge by university students. In addition to being a valuable education tool, the Heritage Education Program also contributes to heritage tourism through events such as cemetery tours and the annual celebration of Conrad Pecel, an internationally renowned stained glass artist who lived and worked in Boynton Beach. Currently, the city is working closely with the Boynton's Women's Club, who are undertaking extensive repairs to their building's wood frame doors and windows. Donated city staff time and a fifty thousand dollar grant from the CRA were used as match funding for a special category grant of one hundred and forty thousand dollars for essential repairs to this National Register site. Historic preservation has also contributed positively to the design of the new homes on the model block, as design features now incorporate elements taken from historic homes such as shutters and porches. The program has also attracted significant positive press, including a thirty-minute program filmed for the Channel Twenty show, Inside History. Further recognition was provided by the Florida League of Cities, who awarded the city first place in the two thousand and thirteen Florida Municipal Achievement Awards Program for the Teaching Your City's History and Heritage category.
Very good. That film was put together by two board members that we had at that time, Eric Salamenson and Jason Schaefer, who were, um, both schoolteachers. So we're grateful to them for their effort. The, um, tonight with us, uh, some board members, uh, if you'd stand up, please. We have Bradley Jackson, Victor Norfus, and Michael Wilson. Thank you very much. And thank you too to Bradley Jackson for, um, his assistance with the PowerPoint. Down or up? Down or up? Up on my back. Okay. I thought we'd share some antique photographs. Actually, they're postcards, just to get a flavor of the, you know, this is, where the gateway to the Gulf Stream. So we thought we'd put some pretty pictures in there for you. One of those photographs is actually an actual photograph of the marina. Uh, I'm not going to read all of this to you. You'll be greatly relieved. Um, the, the board was created as a quasi-judicial board, and we do rule on certificates of appropriateness for historic homes. Okay. The, this is all of the things that we've put upon our local register at this time. We have some interesting features. Not everything that we have to do with is buildings. We like things and places and other kinds of things. The majority of this list, uh, were added to our register before we lost our full-time historic preservation planner in two thousand seventeen. The bottom two are the ones that we've done recently. And both of them are in Little Fledgling Historic District. We would very much like to get off the ground. There it is. The map on your, um, paper copy is very, probably very tiny, but I think one of the interesting things of looking at this overhead is the Boynton Hills Lights feature. This, the street configuration is, it's very special to the city of Boynton Beach. And also, you'll see that the feature entered to the Boynton Lakes entryway feature. We got cut off by I ninety-five Ocean Avenue, obviously used to run through, and there used to be two entryway features. Um, we were hoping that we could get the other one replaced. It may still happen. Um, Boynton was known as a produce, uh, producer. We grew vegetables, things to eat. The, uh, FEC Railroad made Boynton a regular stop to stop and get all of our produce. We were also a dairy community. We had more than thirty dairy farmers, and they actually formed a cooperative for, um, all of the dairy farmers in Palm Beach County. The Women's Club actually purchased milk for all the schoolchildren in nineteen twenty-one. And there were cows in briny breezes. The farmer that had cows in briny breezes sold it in nineteen thirty-three for a quarter of a million dollars. I bet he wished he kept it. Okay. Uh, that other picture you'll see up in the upper right-hand corner was the Boynton Casino. It was demolished in nineteen sixty-seven. Um, this starts with our, our list of wish lists. We, um, have accomplished quite a few things, but number one on our board's wish list is to respectfully request that we get our full-time historic preservation planner position back, please. Um, a lot of these things, we've been, you know, we're very grateful to the Planning and Development Department for their, their diligent work to try and keep us afloat. Um, but, you know, they've got their own things that they need to be doing, and it would be nice if we had someone to help us that was focused on the things that we'd like to focus on. Um, the properties eligible for local designation list has been updated, and we would like to do an outreach effort next to let people know that own these properties. One property that is currently severely endangered is the Andrews House, which is located at three oh six Southeast First Avenue. Um, we're still in discussions with the, the new developer that's purchased it, and, um, I'm hoping we can come to a solution. You know, it, that is basically the oldest still-standing house that people lived in. There's wood in that house from the Kokimbo shipwreck from nineteen oh nine. And we would dearly love to save it. And it's not beyond saving. Let's put it that way, too. Again, outreach and educating the public and encouraging folks to apply to have their homes recognized is important to our city's history. The application does require an in-depth report on the property, a task that P and D has had to hire a consultant to do for the two properties that we've added since we lost our planner. Um, next page. And here's the, the rest of our big fat list. Again, I'm not going to read it all to you. That's why I've given you paper copies tonight and killed a few trees. I apologize. But there's a lot of things that we would really dearly love to do. And we're kind of in a, a status mode because we don't have someone that's really devoted to it. Um, we've been working with the Historical Society on several projects. Getting the, the Rosenwald plaque over the finish line was a, a big task. The Rosenwald plaque was attended by our mayor and by Commissioner Hay, and it's located at the corner of MLK and Seacrest, and it recognizes the history of, um, Point Sienna School. Okay. We worked for, uh, quite a while on designing the medallion, a resin medallion, not a brass one, for people to put on their homes to show that their home has been designated historic. And we, we really would, uh, appreciate a bit of funding to help pay for something like that. We'd like to pursue developing paint-up and fix-up programs in conjunction with existing funding programs that are already being offered by other city departments. Uh, it is good to keep the other city departments, you know, we should all know what we're doing. You know, let the left hand know what the right hand's doing, um, before somebody gets an idea to go, you know, demolish the Boynton Hills Lights or something crazy. You know, it's like, no, those are important to us. Um, other city developments, departments might benefit from working together with historic, keeping historic preservation in mind. Historic resources includes people, places, things, including art, for example. And let's get the bell from the nineteen oh nine Kokimbo shipwreck out on display someplace, please. And maintaining our certified local government status is important because that provides access to grant money, too. Okay. Here we have some old photographs, actually postcards, of the way we were. The upper left-hand corner is Ocean Avenue Bridge, and no two Georges and no Banana Boat and no, nothing, basically, for as far as you can see. And then on the right is the Boynton Inlet, and the bottom corner is Sterling Village. And in the other corner is where Casa Costa stands now. That plaza was a movie theater, and Ben Franklin was there. The Little Ben Franklin store, where you could go to get coffee pot percolators. Anyways, on another important thing that we're going to be looking at is, uh, we have several historic parks in our city that have been around a long time and, and have been named after people, and we would like to include those in our, our local register as well. Um, that's a picture of Rick Roden, if anybody knows. He, I guess, is, plays golf now, but he was kind of a famous person from Boynton Beach that played baseball. All right. So the road to the future includes the past, and historic preservation fosters an appreciation for the way we were while bridging the gap to where we are now. And you can't really see that postcard that it's on, but it's, it's a road. That's an antique linen postcard with the road to the future. Okay. That, that postcard, before I ask you if you have any questions, is the casino, the Boynton Beach Casino that was demolished in nineteen sixty-seven. And that's a fountain that was in front of it. And that's a fountain that was in front of it, it was on the beach, so, okay. Do you have any questions?
First of all, thank you so much for your presentation, and to all of the board members, thank you for all the hard work you've all put in throughout the years. We greatly appreciate you.
Oh, well, thank you.
Great presentation.
Thank you for the opportunity to do it.
Let's, um, let's give them a round of applause. We're gonna, we're gonna have to touch base offline, because I have so many questions, like, where is that bell from the Kokimbo, so?
Oh, I, me too.
Yeah, so, uh, let's go around the dais for anyone who has any questions for Ms. Reedy or comments. Let's begin at my left, Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Barbara. You know, we, um, I grew up in a historic home, so they're kind of near and dear to my heart, and preserving what we can of history in our city is important. You know, as we, you know, get newer and modern buildings and, and amenities, we have to, we also have to look and preserve what, you know, where we, where we started. So, I just, you know, I appreciate you giving this presentation, I think that says something, you know, that, you know, historic, the Historic Preservation Board in particular, you know, I think it's important for the city to, to hear our residents and, and even us on the board to hear what, you know, what's on your horizon, what are your, your, your wants and needs, and, you know, I, I will definitely be circling back with staff on, you know, the historic preservation, you know, the personnel that, that we had that really could, you know, could carry these to-do items and make, you know, things happen. I did have one question, and you might not have the answer, Barbara, but it has to do with Andrews House, and what, um, I know you said that you're working with the new owner to figure out how, is it not already deemed historic?
Well, it was brought up before the board, because we do have the power as a board to designate things ourselves, if we decide that something is important enough, we don't have to wait for the owner to come and say, "We would like to have our home designated." That is one of the methods, okay? So, we were taking steps to have it designated on our local register as historic. And, um, the new, the new owner does have concerns about whether it's savable or not, but our expert consultant did the evaluation, and he's, he came to the conclusion that is, it is definitely savable. The only question is, where can we put it? Can we leave it where it is and find a solution there, or, you know, the new owner would like to move it? And I'd be happy to talk to you about where he would like to move it to.
Yeah, I would, I would really be happy to, to speak to you about that, and to see, and to speak to city staff about, you know, making sure that this, you know, this, this is the oldest house, it's my understanding in the city, and what we can do to preserve history. You know, every little bit helps when we have somebody who's willing to work with us and not just tear it down. I feel like we need to, you know, do whatever we can to make sure we're making, you know, a step in the right direction, so, um, I don't really necessarily have any questions except for I wanted to talk to you about the Andrews House, so, but I, I will circle back with you and my city staff on those two, two items for me, but, you know, I just, I really appreciate everything that, that you and the board are doing to preserve Boynton's history, because, you know, it's, it's important that as, you know, as my kids grow up and as our kids grow up, that there's still a little piece of history that makes them wonder, you know, "How old is that, and where did that come from?", and, and you can, and tell the stories, and so, it's, it's cool to keep hearing the stories, and I hope that we continue to hear them, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Hay.
I really appreciate the work you guys have done, Barbara, you and your board. It's important, as has been stated, that we understand where we've come from, and we preserve those things so that we can appreciate where we're going. I really like your slogan here at the end. Historical preservation fosters an appreciation for the way we were, while bridging the gap to where we are now. That's very important, and it's, it's worthy of putting this show on the road as far as sharing it with our young people now, to appreciate where we were and where we've come. I do, want to ask a few more questions, I'll get with you guys later, but you might want to share a little bit more. You talk about a full-time individual. Sort of what would this, you gotta, can you give me a general idea of what you mean when you're talking full-time employee for Preservation Board?
Sure. I think it was page nine and 10. We have an enormous list of to-dos that we would like to, to set a full-time planner doing. Actually, when we had a full-time planner, we didn't, he wasn't given a budget other than his salary, so everything that he accomplished, he accomplished through grant money. And he was very prolific at obtaining grants, and one of the, when he left, we had to give one of the grants back, because we were unable to complete what we were given the grant money for. And I could talk to you at another time, if you'd like, about what that project was, because we were really sad to, to lose that grant money. But, we didn't have anyone to administer it, and, you know, to take that project forward, so, I don't know if that answers your question or not, but...
Yes, it does. I'm all for the, uh, Historical Board. I, I would encourage you to get with some, and I'll speak to you later about, about some of the people that I know. I know you have Victor Norfus here, who's, uh, you know, walking in.
Wonderful asset, yes.
History is concerned, but also, I don't know if you talked to people like Clyde Harris, people like that?
Give me a list.
Well, yeah, he has some really good shots of how Boynton was and where we are now. We, we'll talk, we'll talk.
That's what, that's what the project was that we couldn't complete, so I'd be very pleased to get your list.
Okay, just keep doing the work you're doing.
Thank you, sir.
Good job.
Thank you, Commissioner. We're gonna turn out a Vice Mayor, followed by Commissioner Cruz.
Nope, thank you to the board, thank you for your presentation. I will say, it was, uh, it was bittersweet seeing that large marina out there, you know, and it's no longer there, so I'd love to see what we can do to bridge that gap in the future.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you for your presentation. The second-to-last slide had a really beautiful message that really touched me. That's all I'm gonna say. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, and as far as my comments go, I'll, I'll reserve it for, for offline conversation.
Okay, happy to talk to you anytime, you know that.
Great, well, thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Appreciate your work. Thank you. We're gonna move on now to the next portion of the agenda with, which is public audience. For those that are new or joining us for the first time, public audience speakers are limited to three minutes per person, per meeting. Uh, this is, this period is not a Q and A. Staff and members of the city commissioner will take notes of the items presented during this time, and we will respond to them after the meeting has concluded. For those of you joining us virtually and wish to speak, please keep your digital hands raised throughout the duration of in-person public comments. After in-person public comments have concluded, we will no longer accept virtual participants. I will also inform the virtual speakers, when you have 30 seconds remaining on the clock, we'll proceed first with those in, in the chambers. Please form a line between the two podiums, and we will alternate between the two. And as always, don't forget to state your name for the record, and Ms. Oyer, when you are ready, you may begin.
Thank you, Mayor. Susan Oyer, Boynton Beach, Seacrest Estates. Andrew, we are so getting together on that at some point. First thing I want to say, yes, to electric car chargers, but no to the person in the blue SUV who's parked outside in front of City Hall in the car charger space and does not have a $30 ticket on his windshield, which he should, he or she should have, because that's what the state fee is, and nor could I find a police officer to sic on the person, and somebody pulled in and tried to take the spot I was gonna take, and I had to go remind them that they don't have an electric car, and they need to get the heck out before they get a ticket. And so, I would encourage you to enforce the city rules, the state laws, which say a $30 ticket, although feel free to raise it to more to really give an incentive, and, um, let's solve this problem, make some money for our city. I do want to say no to full-time commissioners. I do want to say no to a strong mayor, and I do want to say no to getting rid of term limits, but yes, to charging people and ticketing them and raising some money for our city for parking in electric car charger spots. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next speaker, begin when you're ready and state your name for the record.
Act McCray, 806 Northwest Fourth Street, Boynton. I own three properties here in this city. I enjoy seeing your Vice Mayor smiling every time I get up here, but every time I get my tax bill, it makes me feel kinda sad, to know how you all are trying to nickel and dime us, I'm just saying, in order to fend your own pockets. Partners, I don't hate or nice, I want to address that, but I'm going to address tonight a concern, that it might not mean anything to you all, but it means a hell of a lot to the citizens in District Two. I had two people call me this afternoon who lost their loved ones. I serve as a certified funeral service practitioner, a licensed funeral director and embalmer. I'm saying all of that to say this, when someone loses a loved one, that's bad enough, but when they approach this city and find that they have no place to lay their loved ones, when they've been thinking that all through their lifetime, that when this happened, I could bury them in the city cemetery. It was stated to us prior by one of your elected officials that you all were looking for property out west of Boynton. I haven't heard anything else about that. Also, you all are wasting precious space over Sarah Sims. You all could go ahead and go ahead and go ahead and replant that and take that cemetery from where it's at now, all the way out to MLK Boulevard. Take some trees up, you don't need it. I served on the cemetery board here for the city of Boynton. I told Lori Laveria that we need to replant the cemetery, municipal cemetery here in Boynton. When she took me up on it, we gathered 400 new spaces for citizens to be buried in. Not only do you take care of the living, it's your job to take care of our dead, too. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next speaker, again, we're alternating between podiums. Begin when you're ready and state your name for the record.
My name is Brother Victor Norfus, I'm on the Preservation Board, also heart of Boynton and a lot of other things in the city. I really didn't plan on coming up here tonight, but there was, uh, information on the television about a ship that was going to be raised and was worth billions of dollars, and they were talking about whether Spain owned it, or whether Colombia owned it, but, uh, back in the 1700s, there were Florida Indians that were taken from Florida and sent there and did that mining. And a lot of people don't remember that there were Indians here in Boynton Beach. With the Unity Project that's going on, ordinance addresses African-Americans, but it does not address Native Americans. One of the things that we don't know is that we were not citizens. I am a descendant of Seminoles. We were not citizens until 1925, so there was no reason to address Native Americans. They were banned from downtown at the creation of the city. The cemetery that he's talking about, Sarah Sims, as well as Barton, are underutilized, underfunded, and, uh, they're really just not taken care of, because they're African-American cemeteries. But the Barton Cemetery is also a Native American cemetery. We remember about the mounds that were over there, also on the beach. If you travel directly down the canal, you would see those mounds on that side of the canal. Now, where the Barton Cemetery is, there was a Boynton Indian town. There were mounds, but those were used to pave over the roads. So, no one really remembers what was there, but then, the ones that are out west, they're still there. But if you follow the canal all the way west, they will be on that side of the canal. So, the Seminoles that I'm referring to actually lived on the beach, and they traveled that canal. January 13th, I'll be bringing Black Seminoles here. We will be celebrating, and we will be doing a ceremonial commemoration of Barton Cemetery for the Native Americans. That's pretty much it. I wasn't prepared to come here with anything, but I just wanted to share that with you. When people are talking about the billions and billions and billions of money that's down there, it was built with our blood, Floridians. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, state your name for the record and begin when you're ready.
Cindy Falco de Carrato. Well, I'm glad we have doggy parks. I live in Forest Park. We talked about having a park. Someone was gonna donate a park, didn't happen. When do we, the people, get a park, so the elderly can come out and hear the birds and sit and meet other people, where people can walk and get some exercise and camaraderie, and where people can play some extra sports or exercise or do something? I've asked this since day one, and I have not heard that we are getting a park, but I'm glad the dogs are getting a park. I'm glad the dogs that are getting a party, I mean, wow, dogs getting a party. Where's the middle class getting a party, on the beach, special day, special parking trucks coming out, just so we can have the beach to ourself for a couple hours, or the elderly, or the handicapped? I, I don't see you doing anything for living souls with arms and legs, or without arms and legs, that would like to go to the beach and have that special time set apart for them. I also just heard that there was a building roof that collapsed today. How did that happen? I mean, don't we have zoning, and don't we have building and planning, and don't they do all their supposedly great works, that hear all the accolades, and yet, a roof caves in? How many people were killed? Did somebody get hurt? I don't know. And also, I have some friends who really are into the Pirate Fest, and they were so disappointed this year, because they had closed at 5 o'clock, it opened at 10 o'clock, they didn't have any of the things they had before, and they are born and raised here in Boynton Beach, and they went to every Pirate Fest, and they were really saddened, and they left a lot of messages, I'm sure those who are on the Boynton Raw saw some of their messages, and they were really, really sad, and they said it really was the most disappointing day for their Pirate Fest. I don't do Pirate Fest, I don't do Halloween, I don't celebrate in Satan's Kingdom, but just wanted to let you know that all is not well as what's portrayed here in this room. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Harry Woodworth, Boynton Beach. I was gonna go on about the agenda, moving targets, it looks like you guys are ahead of me on that. Please fix that. I mean, it's bad enough as a citizen to try to participate in the village, it's even harder when you can't read the agenda and know what you're really prepared for, I don't know how you all prepare, because those of us out in the rest of the world can't. You're gonna fix that, I think what I would say is, that gives us a, sets a perception that we really don't need as a city, and perception is fact, so I know some of these changes are very minor and very routine and seem very simple, but you're setting a perception that you don't want in this city, you really don't want that. The other thing I was gonna mention is, I tried to look at the city budget this week that you approved in September, it's still not posted. I'm pretty sure your work, Florida statutes require that to be posted 30 days after it's approved. If we're gonna talk about financial stuff within the city, it would be nice if we had the stuff up on the website, okay? Because otherwise, what are we talking about? I think that's being worked on. Finally, I was gonna actually say, I, I went to the planning strategy sessions, I think I've been to all of them, and the ones in past years, too, actually, because I'm kinda thrilled by that stuff. I've spent most of my life in engineering and management and corporate 500 corporations. Government amuses me a lot, because there doesn't seem to be much method to the madness. Priorities change, there's political agendas running, and at the end of the day, the governance gets lost. Your consultant is doing a wonderful job of getting a vision, actions that lead to that vision, taking it all the way down to funding and then having the prioritization of those things, so we don't run helter-skelter. So, I really wanted to compliment you, because I've been to a lot of those classes, I've taught a lot of those classes, and they're not fun for anybody there, especially if you don't believe in that, so, I'd like to say, you know, it's really refreshing to go to that, I'm sorry there weren't more people there. So, would be nice to see that happen, you know, the city, you know, keep working on its vision, its plans and its strategies, and move us in a direction that makes some sense, and get rid of some of this political stuff, that just doesn't make any sense, guys, and you're making the city look bad, you're making yourselves look bad when it happens. And finally, I guess, the, the bond that's gonna be talked about at some point, I, I would hope that that money is spent on long-term things that... is spent on long-term things that that are really gonna better the city. Uh, spending uh long-term money on short-term expenses is not good. In fact, in the financial world, when you don't have the money to pay for your current bills, there's a word for that. It's called insolvency. So let's, if we're gonna do capital spending, which we should, let's buy big things, not little things with it. It's not an operating fund. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next speaker on the other podium. State your name for the record and begin when you're ready.
Uh, Brenda Williams, three three seven Northeast Twenty-Fourth Avenue in Boynton. Uh, first thing I'd like to address is the fact that the house that's abandoned next door to my house, the community standards did send someone out to cut the front yard and not the back. And it's still, it's overgrown again. So that's been a while since they actually did it, but they did do something, but not the backyard. The backyard looked like a forest. The second thing I wanted to address is the cemetery also. That was one of the things that I had brought before the commission once before, not once before, several times, that there was nowhere in the city of Boynton for us to be buried. And I'm getting closer to that that uh stage now. So I would appreciate it if you did. You did say that you all were working on something, but so far we haven't heard anything else about it. And the third thing I want to address is why are we talking about changing our commissioners from a part-time position to a full-time position to increase salaries? And then talking about getting whatever term limits when we voted on putting term limits in in the first place? So I'm against anything that has to do with putting mu- more money in part-time positions uh pocket. If you you knew the job was part-time when you tried uh started this election and it's been that way all the time. So why are we considering changing when nothing has really changed? And I'm against anything of that nature. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker in the audience.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Evangeline Ward. Address fifteen eighteen North Sea Crest Boulevard, Boynton Beach, Florida. I am a native resident of Boynton Beach, born and raised here. My grandparents moved here in nineteen twenty-three, so they've been here almost a hundred years, okay? My thing is I love children. I used to teach school. And as the lady said, we getting a whole lot of dog parks. And for years, we are putting priorities over things that shouldn't be. My priority is the safety of our children. Galaxy Elementary, Ponzianna Elementary. I appreciate you finally put some crosswalks down, but we still don't have the necessary bumps. Not only that, on Fourth, Northwest Fourth, Northwest Third and Northwest Thirteenth Avenue, our children don't have sidewalks to walk on. They walk on the corner of a curb. And I want you to know, I know children get hurt. I know cars run over them because in the instances when my children were going to school at Ponzianna, my children were hit by the grace of God. My fifty-six-year-old son almost went blind because he was hit. Now, it's so good to have these things, but wouldn't it be very nice that a child can walk on a sidewalk without having somebody come and knock them or hit them and keep going? And even Commissioner Hayno, there was a young lady of the family. They hit this young girl. They killed her. She died. And guess what? They don't know who did it. And that's been over twenty years ago. Come on. And if you don't believe me, come over there when school is going on, okay? My next thing is to um our Vice Mayor and our Mayor, the city of Boynton Beach belongs to all of us, District One, Two, and Three, okay? And it would be so good, especially on the community meetings in District Two, that some of y'all show your faces. It's just not for Two, I mean for District One and Three. It's for the city of Boynton Beach. And I don't know about y'all, but in that little section, District Two, y'all get a lot of tax money from us. So come on, be fair to us. Take care of our children just like you take care of your children, like you spend money and have sidewalks and all this good stuff to keep them safe. Save our children also. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, other podium.
Good afternoon. My name is Katie Miller and I come down just to give cuckoos to the Boynton Beach Police Department on eleven Southwest Twenty-Eighth Avenue. And there was no place to park. I mean, you couldn't go down the streets because cars was on each side. So they had done a very good job of getting those cars moved, except when I got ready to come tonight, next door to me, there was two cars headed the wrong way. Next door to them, there was three cars headed the wrong way, but other than that, the street was clear. So I just wanted to thank the Boynton Police Department and you, Reverend Hay. Thank you.
Next speaker. State your name for the record and begin when you're ready.
Hi, my name is Lillian Mayhew. I live in High Point. I understand, I think it's eight B or something on the agenda tonight. You're gonna be discussing the um baseball field. Um, I'm just trying to find out if there's any kind of a like a display or a picture of what they plan to do with all of that, most importantly being the parking situation.
Ma'am, I just want to pause you for one moment. I just want to let you know that there will be a presentation on that later this evening, but you're welcome to use this time to talk about it now.
Okay.
I'm gonna continue your time now.
The parking is just a situation for us because we have a clubhouse right there on the corner and we have constant parking around our clubhouse, at our clubhouse, down the road. You can hardly drive down that road for all the trip. They're on both sides and they're not, they're parked where there isn't parking. They just put it anywhere. Um, so and I understand they're gonna put a wall there now. I don't quite understand what the wall is down the side of High Point. And I would like an explanation of that, but that really kind of blocks our breeze and even our sight of being able to watch the baseball games and stuff. But mostly I'm just interested in the parking there. They come down our section a lot of times. We um, they don't want to go out the way of um Woolbright. So they come through our community and then race down like Main Boulevard. We've tried putting um speed bumps and so forth. That doesn't even slow them down. So they're going really fast through our community, which is private roads. We have to pay to pave those roads. So it would be nice to find a way to defer them from coming through our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next podium, next speaker in the other podium.
Good evening. My name is Christy Ward. Um, Boynton resident from fifteen eighteen North Sea Crest Boulevard, Boynton Beach, Florida. Um, I have, um, I just want to say Boynton Beach consists of four districts, right? But the thing is, it seems as though like District Two seems to be like the redheaded stepchild. And we talk about the city of Boynton Beach. We want to put it out there and we get accolades, but the thing is, we must understand that we all are a part of Boynton Beach. It's not just One, Two, and Three. There's, there's all districts that we need to put together and it would be great to see our mayor and vice mayor at many of these meetings that your constituents have because we have concerns. So if we have concerns and you know nothing about them, nor do you come to speak with the people, how can we go forward? We have to be able to come together as one, as a unit, because the thing is, if you want us to back you, you have to be there to back us as well. You don't know the issues and you don't know the problems if you don't come to where the problems and the issues are. We are not at, we shouldn't be at odds and ends with one another. We should be jointly together because the thing is, I've been born and raised here. I raised my children here. My grandparents live here and there's so much history and so much richness here. But the thing is, we don't see you guys at all. So that is a problem for me. And so when it comes a problem for that, when I don't see your faces, I feel as though like hmm, you you could care less about us. We're just something that you just throw away and I don't like that. And so that brings me to the problem of wanting to come from part-time to a full-time position. If you do the bare basics and the small minimums, just the surface things right now in part-time, why is it that you should have like a full-time term or position? I'm against all that. I just feel at this point, we need to step up our game and whatever we're speaking and saying that we're doing, don't make it just look good on paper. We actually need to see your presence. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, other podium. One second while I reset. There we go. Begin when you're ready and state your name for the record. He's gonna go first, then you'll go next.
Uh, I'm David Merker. I live in eight Southport in Boynton Beach. I found something very amusing, confusing too. When I heard the term full-time versus part-time, and the reason why that surprised me, I've been fortunate to be a commissioner in Boynton Beach. I've been fortunate to be a mayor, I I mean a commissioner, in New Jersey. Up north, the term was strong mayor versus weak mayor. And that meant that you, the city manager, wouldn't be, how should I say, as powerful as you are. And you, the mayor and commissioner, um, your say would be more overpowering and more controlling. But when I heard full-time and part-time, I was taken back by that completely. Why? Well, our state senators, if I'm not mistaken, and our House reps, if I'm not mistaken, are not defined as full-time either. The honor to serve up there, as I have, is to give of yourself, to be a participant in the city and not be so, use my language, I'm debating if I should say it, so goddamn selfish that all you want is money. Because when you volunteer and when you hold office up there, you're fa- you're volunteering for the sake and the heart of your city. So if you want a full-time job, and I'm assuming, other than I know Commissioner Hay is retired, but as I look at all the rest, I'm assuming you have another job. I'm older. I still work. So when you use the term full-time, part-time, I'm amused and I thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Next speaker in the other podium. State your name for the record and begin when you're ready.
John Daines, Post Office Box seven one three.
Is the mic on? Is it on?
It's got the green light on.
It's good. All right, thank you.
John Daines, Post Office Box seven one three, uh, Boynton Beach, Florida. Uh, zip code three three four two five. Uh, I want to address this commission about uh, part-time position. Uh, Vice Mayor, asking the attorney, city attorney to look up.
Sir, I'm gonna ask you to generalize your comments to the whole commission, all right?
Well, I'm talking to the uh everybody in here, okay? Everybody's on this dice can hear what I say, okay? And I'm addressing the situation about this issue of part-time becoming full-time. There's no city commission in the country. I've done the research. I don't need to go to the city attorney. I've done the research that has allowed a city commission to be a full-time position, not one in the entire country. So now you want to try to bring this to this city when it has never been done in the history of this country? And it's all for financial gain? I mean, you think about it. Mr. Prince Thurgood, you have a good retirement with the school district. Ms. Kelly, I'm quite sure your retirement's pretty good with your law firm. Ms. Cruz, you work for Palm Beach County, okay? You got a good retirement. I'm telling you, employee, so I know you have a good retirement. Uh, Vice Mayor, I mean, I don't understand, you know, y'all, I don't know, I don't understand the concept. We've come through this weekend, year in, month out, right, fighting and going against the constituents that puts you in this position. And I'm quite sure if they thought that they voted y'all in for y'all to take financial gain from the citizens that sweat from the brow in this community, I'm quite sure their vote would be different. And I can tell you right now, where I come from, when I was a child on chair here, the old folks used to say, right, some people rob Peter to pay Paul. But I beg the difference. Some people rob Peter to pay themselves, okay? And if you think that this city and the constituents in this city are gonna sit back and allow that to happen without a fight, get ready.
All right, thank you for your comments. Next person, please approach the podium. State your name for the record. As always, begin when you're ready. Three minutes.
Good evening. Um, Sandra Watson, three four eight Boynton Bay Circle, Boynton Beach, Florida. Um, I just have to say anything, but I just have one, one concern. I sit, I'm the chair of the senior advisory board and I've been coming and asking if there was some things that we can do for our seniors in the city. Um, I found out that they decided that they're gonna do something on Monday, Wednesday and Fridays at Carolyn Sims for seniors. My point was to bring all of our community in Boynton together. We have a senior center for seniors of Boynton Beach, not for one particular set of seniors. You decide to put something over at Carolyn Sims, you don't even tell the senior advisory board anything. You do it Monday, Wednesday and Friday where you just give them bingo and a couple of games. No incentive to come. Now, we've talked about this, that our seniors are going to Delray because they got incentives to go there. Then you decide to have something at Se- at um Carolyn Sims where there's no incentives, nothing. Do you really think that they're gonna stop going to Pompe Park to come over at Carolyn Sims and have nothing, when then you have something at the senior center and you have trips, different things that they can go to there? You talk about unity. I'm sitting on this unity project and I'm thinking, where is the unity in the city for the seniors? Why are we just making sure that these people get anything and then over here they get a little more than something and it 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 doesn't make any sense? So I really felt defeated when I, when I had to go back to my senior advisory board to tell them this is what happened, because that's not what I was told when I was talking to everybody. They said that we were gonna do stuff for the seniors. I don't think that's fair and I just wanted that to be known. Thank you.
Ms. Watson, um, I don't normally respond to public comment because this is a time to be heard and it's not a Q and A, but I'm just devastated to hear that you feel defeated, if that was the word you used. Um, I didn't know that that occurred. I'm not sure if my colleagues even knew about this either, but we will speak with our management staff. We will get on that. Um, but I ask if you can not feel that way. It's devastating to hear. All right, we'll work together. All right, next speaker.
Juanita Gabriel, living in one two one Southwest Third Court. Blessed are the peacemakers, they are called the children of God. That's a thing Matthew fifth chapter says about all the blessed people like, but I didn't, I'm a pastoral person and I'm a certified nursing assistant. I was being here as Scotter driven away two times from this hall because of my side effects of medication, but nobody asked like what happened to me, but it was the doctor's mistake or I don't know. I I was about to face the medi- medical problem, but now I am so much good. I'm stabilized and I want, we are spending all the money for destruction, not for the construction from every, every part like Navy, Army, all the- all the my sister is a vetner, working for vetner in California, Paul Alto. She was the one taking care of us and my family. Please, don't ever, ever underestimate the psychiatric people like me who have the problem. I want to pray, I'm a pastoral person and I'm a nurse too, and I want to pray, our Father in heaven, this thing, please give me one minute. Our Father in heaven, hallowed be their name, their kingdom come, their will be done. On earth as it's in heaven, give us this day our daily bread, forgive us our sins as we forgive those sins against.
My heart goes out to you. It really does, and I want you to get the assistance that you need. And so if our city staff could please connect with her and provide whatever resources that we can help her out, please. All right, I thank you for your time, ma'am, but your comments have to be pertaining to city business. So city staff, please connect with her and provide whatever assistance we can provide. All right, thank you so much. We're going to move on to the next speaker, one second. All right. Ms. Reedy.
Good evening, Barbara Reedy. You may recall the email that I sent to you all, sharing that Phil Toronto had filed a frivolous slap lawsuit against me, which is a strategic lawsuit against public participation. Well, my attorney that I can ill afford got that frivolous lawsuit dismissed and tells me that I'd have a good case for Melissa's malicious prosecution against Phil Toronto. You may also have heard that the East Boynton Beach Little League Board met, listened to parents' complaints, and voted to ban Phil Toronto from the Little League fields. I learned that night that Phil Toronto is suing another parent, who is his son's coach in civil court. Phil Toronto laughed at that board meeting when parents brought up that they'd emailed the city about Phil Toronto. Phil Toronto said, oh, they just called me from the city. We've got another one. Ha, ha, ha. He thought that was very funny. I wonder when enough is going to be enough. Thank you.
All right, this is last call for in-person public comment speakers. Please approach the podium. As always, state your name for the record and begin when you're ready. Again, this is last call after in-person. We'll go to those online. All right, I see only two more people, and that'll be the end. All right, begin when you're ready, sir.
Bishop Kenneth B. Jones, I'm at one thirty-five Northeast Seventh Avenue, House of Kingdom Worship. I speak for the clergy of this city. Can I ask a question? Do y'all hear what the people are saying as leaders? Do y'all hear the cry of the people as leaders? You must understand, there will come a point when people will get tired of you telling them that it's raining when you're pissing on them. There will come a point when people will get tired. And so I say to you all, if you want the city to be better, just like you just cut her off from praying, it's going to take prayer, bro. It's going to take prayer. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. It's going to take that. It's going to take that. It's not being religious or anything. You all need spiritual help, supernatural help. And that's what it's going to take. So I want to encourage you all to hear the cry of the people. And the clergy is against giving full-time pay to commissioners.
All right, our last public comment speaker, begin when you're ready and state your name for the record.
Stephen Grant, one, three, six, Northeast Third Avenue. A couple of things, when I was the mayor, I always thought it was a good idea to have the advisory boards. Because before the two thousand thirteen election that changed the charter, there was a charter review committee, is what I was told. So that's something that you might want to implore to, if there's citizens here that want to volunteer their time, as they think that you should volunteer your time, which I don't necessarily agree with that. I think that your expenses here should be compensated for because of the time and effort that you put forward. That is a suggestion. I would also like to thank you and the city manager for putting a sign up on Wilbright Road heading east. It was decades that sign. It was very poorly done. I think there's still a very old sign on Seacrest heading north. If you could fix that, appreciate it, because everybody coming into Boynton Beach should be proud that they're coming back home. And the last sad news, my cat passed away, and so there's not much that I can do for her. But I did provide some funds to the Director of Finance for the Memorial Tree Fund. I know that you did some great things for our furry family members here. And so I just want to know if any of you would help support that with the Community Support Fund so that we can get a tree for all of our pets that have crossed the Rainbow Bridge. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Fire chief, I see that you're approaching the podium. Other than this, in-person public comments are now closed, and we're going to go to those online.
Mayor, thank you very much. I just have a quick comment if I can. Boynton Beach Fire Rescue is pleased to announce in conjunction with the Soup Kitchen located in West Boynton, that we are sponsoring a food drive for non-perishable foods on November eleventh for Thanksgiving. It's going to be taking place at Walmart at thirty-two hundred Old Boynton Beach Boulevard. So we'd like to get that word out to the community, try to get some support so we can support the community with some food for Thanksgiving. So thank you very much for the opportunity to speak on it.
All right, thank you, chief. Mani, we're now going to go to those online. Mani, how many people have their digital hands raised?
Mr. Mayor, we have no digital hands raised.
You said none? All right, with that, public comments is now officially closed. We're going to move on with the remainder of the agenda. The next portion of the agenda is administrative, five A Advisory Board appointments. Let me move to my list, and I'll announce which boards have openings and which have applicants. All right, Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals. I see that there are no applicants, and there is a position for regular member to an alternate member, number two. Moving on to the next item in the list, Employees Pension Plan Board of Trustees. There is one applicant. It is Stephen Grant, and that nomination comes from me. And with that, I'd like to nominate Stephen Grant to be a member appointed by the city onto the Employees Pension Plan Board of Trustees.
Second.
All right, so I hear there was
Second and nomination.
All right, are there any objections? All right, seeing no objections, you are appointed by acclamation. We're moving on to Education and Youth Advisory Board. I see that there are no applicants, but there is a regular member position and an alternate position. The Library Board also has no applicants, and it has a regular member position as well as an alternate. The Recreation and Parks Board, no applicants. We have a regular member position, alternate as well. The Senior Advisory Board, no applicants, and we have a regular member and an alternate member application, position. All right. With that, that concludes Advisory Board appointments. We're now going to move on to Community Support Funds. The very first request here is five hundred dollars requested by Vice Mayor Turkin to allocate to VFW post. Is it five, three, five, five, three, three, five? Is that right?
Yes, Mayor.
All right, I see you had not. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve that Community Support Fund allocation?
So move.
And we have a motion and second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. The second request is another five hundred dollars made, requested by Vice Mayor Turkin to growing strong ministries. Is there a second to this request?
Second.
The second came from Commissioner Kelly. All those in favor of the motion to approve the five hundred dollar allocation of Community Support Funds to growing strong ministries, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Motion passes unanimously. There were two additional requests that were added on to today's agenda from Commissioner Cruz. That was Commissioner Cruz, correct me if I'm wrong, five hundred dollars to the Alzheimer's Foundation. Is that correct?
Yes. Alzheimer's Association.
Alzheimer's Association. Thank you for that correction. Is there a second to that request? The second came from Commissioner Hay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Motion passes unanimously. The fourth and final request, this is another five hundred dollar allocation from Commissioner Cruz's Community Support Funds to eat better, live better. Is there a second to this request? The second came from Commissioner Kelly. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Did I miss anyone's additional request? I believe that's it, right? It's only four items. Thank you. We're now going to move on to, I'm sorry, Commissioner, were you about to say something?
No, I just said, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Moving on to Consent Agenda, are there any items under Consent Agenda that my colleagues would like to pull? Let's go around the days. Commissioner Cruz, did you have a request?
Yes, Mayor, I would like to pull six A.
Six A?
As well as six E, F, and G.
Okay.
If we could hear E, F, and G, kind of a quick, you know, brief, nothing long.
All right, E, F, and G, along with A, those are the items that I heard. One second, let me just get everyone's request, and then we'll come back. Vice Mayor, did you have any items you'd like to pull?
Six D.
Six D. All right. Let's go to Commissioner Hay.
It's already been pulled.
All right, Commissioner Kelly.
No, I'm good. Thank you.
All right, so just to recap, to make sure I didn't miss anything, the items that have been pulled are six A, six D, E, F, and G. Is that correct? All right, with that, may I have a motion to approve the remainder of Consent Agenda?
So move.
We have a motion to, I don't know who said it, because there's so many people said it so quickly. Commissioner Cruz, there was a motion to approve the remainder of Consent Agenda. Is there a second to approve? The second came from Commissioner Hay. All those in favor to approve the remainder of Consent Agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Although suppose, the motion passes unanimously. So now let's address each of those items that have been pulled. Let's pull them in order. Item six A, proposed resolution number R twenty-three dash one, five, eight, approve the City Attorney Department Fiscal Year Twenty-three, Twenty-four Budget Amendment and the addition of the positions of Deputy City Attorney and Senior Legal Assistant. All right, let me turn, Commissioner Cruz, this was your request. We have the city attorney here. If you have any questions on this item.
Yes, Mayor. Well, first of all, I wanted to kind of go over, I don't know if the city manager can let us know what our legal expenses have been in the last month.
One second, Commissioner and everyone. I'm going to ask if we could pause for a moment until the doors close. It is very distracting. All right, go ahead. Please continue.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Cruz. Last month, we had a total of one hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars in legal expenses. One hundred and four thousand of that went to the firm we currently have on interim basis. I know from the standpoint of the hourly rate of the firm, I do amazing work. And this is not at all any way to disparage that firm or anything like that, but obviously the costs to the city is pretty significant. So I know with the request that the city attorney is looking to bring in a deputy city attorney to kind of broaden her bandwidth to be able to deal with the abundance of legal items that come through the city of Boynton Beach. Just one month, and those legal expenses came up in-house with our firm was one hundred and four thousand, outside council was thirty thousand, so that's the total cost. If you have to answer any other questions as well.
Thank you. Yeah, so, I mean, the purpose of that is really to understand that we're spending over a hundred thousand dollars every month in legal fees. I mean, that's got to be real scary to the taxpayers, and I think that, you know, as we mentioned, we want to be fiscally responsible. One of the steps that this administration took was to hire an in-house attorney who not only has litigation experience, but also government experience. At that point, obviously, she can do it by herself, so she does need staff to be working in her team. I, you know, we had a conversation about, you know, what the rate is going for in different cities. And I would be, you know, in favor of supporting your staff coming on board. The only thing that I would like to remove, because I just don't believe it's necessary, would be item zero, zero, one, one, nine, one, zero, five, one, four, six, four, three, three, which would be the vehicle purchase for eighty-eight thousand dollars for two, four explorers. I do not believe that's necessary. And I would like to remove that from the request. So I am in favor of approving the request, but without any vehicle expenses, because I think those are, you know, a little bit unnecessary. That would be the only thing, but I would be in favor of approving the remainder of it.
Do you like me to respond now?
Absolutely, counsel.
And I think that would be acceptable. The only thing that I would state is that I think a vehicle allowance would still be appropriate. There are other positions that already exist in my office that have a vehicle allowance, and so bringing on a deputy that doesn't have that would be
Yeah, absolutely.
Kind of part of, however, if in the future, I would like at least the option to consider bringing that back on at some point in the future, depending on what the needs may be with regard to her travel and those sorts of things.
So, I mean, it depends what my colleagues are thinking. But instead of an actual vehicle, you know, one thing that we do with our CRA, well, we did with our CRA Executive Director, was a five hundred dollar a month vehicle stipend, which worked for her for a very long time. Obviously, this is a different department, and again, this could be revisited at a future date, but honestly, I might want to have a conversation down the road regarding vehicle spending and just really looking to be more fiscally responsible in that perspective. So, you know, I would like to move that we provide an equal stipend of six thousand dollars a year or five hundred dollars a month for this position instead of an actual vehicle purchase. And, you know, the rest seems pretty fair to me.
All right, so I heard a formal motion to amend this proposed ordinance. And to, let me restate it just so I absolutely understood you. This is to strike out the vehicle allocations for two vehicles and instead replace it with a six thousand, it turns out six thousand annually, or about five hundred a month stipend for vehicle allowance. That is your proposal?
Yes, Mayor, that's my proposal.
All right, so is there a second?
The purpose for that? Sorry to interrupt. With regard to the two vehicles, that would be an issue only because my contract does provide.
No, 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 not yours.
Okay.
I'm sorry, because I had said too. That's why we needed clarification.
I just need a clarification.
No, your contract is already done.
Okay, so this is for the one vehicle?
One vehicle.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. All right, so a motion has been put forth on the table. So is there a second to go ahead and strike out the vehicle and instead replace it with a vehicle allowance as mentioned?
Second.
There is a second to that, all right? All those, is there any further discussion on this particular motion?
Yeah, I just wanted.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Are we just having a discussion with regard to this motion? Because I'm not ready to clear the entire.
Exactly, right. So it's not the final vote, it's just the particular motion that she made.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Oh, I'm sorry, was that it?
I don't have a particular comment on this issue, but I didn't want to close out the entire item until we've all discussed it.
Understood.
Nobody else has talked.
Of course, of course, right. Did you have a particular comment on just the motion that's been made, Vice Mayor?
In reference to vehicle purchase versus stipend? Yes, so one hundred percent see where Commissioner Cruz is coming from. So with the vehicle purchase, that would be, that's a purchase for a city vehicle that would be used by this individual, correct?
That is correct.
What do we typically do with those vehicles if that individual seems to move on or is terminated for whatever reason?
I believe Mario can fill you in better, but my understanding is they become part of the fleet.
Okay, so my question is, you know, we talked about being fiscally responsible. Does it make more sense to allow a vehicle purchase because it's going to be recycled? Or is a stipend going to end up costing us more in the long run? You know, I would want to, I would want to look at that. You know, definitely.
So Vice Mayor, I see Mario Guzman is here. I think he could provide us with some technical background on this matter.
Yeah, to answer the question, it will be a vehicle of his purchase for the attorney's office, but it is a city asset. So that can be repurposed for fire department, police department, and we currently do that now as we buy vehicles to get reassigned throughout the city. as we buy vehicles to get reassigned throughout the city. So it is a city asset. When we sell that asset, the proceeds come back to the fleet fund. So it's a city asset.
Okay.
And to your point, you're correct, a stipend is a stipend and we don't, we would not see that.
Right, so yeah, I guess, I guess there's a lot of variables there. How long is this person going to be here? What makes more sense? I mean, value of the car is going to decrease. I mean, listen, I'll listen to what my colleagues have to say. I just want to make sure that vehicle purchase is indeed for, you know, the city. It is a city asset and could be recycled if we decided to go down that route.
Let me, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, were you finished?
No.
Mario, let me ask you, is there a financial, and perhaps even the finance director could chime in as well, but is there a financial benefit to one over the other? What is the preferred or the standard procedure for city staff and vehicles?
I can speak from a fleet perspective. I'm not sure if there's a benefit pro or against, it's just different options. I mean, I can argue both points. From a technical vehicle perspective, it is a city asset that can be, it's part of our fleet, the proceeds come back to us. There is that initial capital outlay for the asset, but once we have it, it's ours. Aside with that, you know, you have maintenance and fuel. As far as allowance. Yeah, you could talk on the tier.
Thank you. Tenille DeCasse, Director of Human Resources, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commission. It really depends on the tier that they fall in. We have different tiers for executive director, director, manager, and so forth. So a deputy director, excuse me, a deputy city attorney would be equal to like a deputy director or maybe a DCM, deputy city manager, and they receive a vehicle. Except not all departments receive vehicle. My deputy director, she receives a stipend. So it really depends on the type of work and what department and so forth. But it really depends what tier they're in. We have different tiers for benefits.
All right, so I'd like to hear from our finance director. I see that she's approaching, but I've heard two things now. One from Mario, two different options, neither pro nor con. From our HR director, it's a matter of tier, rank, and level. That's what I heard, right? And on that argument, it would, you know, it would seem to suggest that because this is an upper level executive position and my understanding is that other upper level executive positions have it. But again, I'm just trying to assess the financial pros and cons. Finance Director.
Mayor Commissioners, Mara Fredrickson, Director of Financial Services. So the analysis that finance has done and we haven't really spent a ton of time with the overall cost of what it's costing us for take-home vehicles. But I would tell you that the annual cost for a take-home vehicle, if you consider insurance, the replacement for the vehicle, the fuel for the vehicle, the maintenance and all of that, it averages about $18,000 a year versus a stipend, which would be about $6,000 per year.
Okay, I think you've made a financial argument. All right, Vice Mayor, you, again, these are comments on this particular motion.
Yeah, just one last thing. So is there not an additional vehicle in the fleet that we could use so we don't have to purchase a vehicle? Maybe we don't have to use a stipend? Is there an existing vehicle we could use so we don't have to spend anymore?
Excuse me, and I'm sorry, Mario Guzman, Director of Public Works, for the record, I didn't state my name. At this point, we're trying to replace most of the assets in the fleet. It's, you know, the vehicles that are available have 90,000 miles and have met the end of their life cycle. So we should sell those assets, but continuing to use those are just added maintenance and breakdowns. So at this point, we want to get to that point to repurpose it. We have what we call a DNR, a do-not-replace vehicle, that those are shared throughout the city. But our fleet's aging pretty, so we don't, we don't have vehicles available. If they do, they're over 100,000 miles.
Okay, all right, thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Kelly, I believe you had your, I'm sorry, were you finished?
No, I was going to say with that, with that being said and with what Mara said as far as the maintenance costs, I'd be okay with the stipend.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Kelly, you had your hand up.
My only question, Mara, it's for you, because as we're talking about this, I'm looking at this appropriation amendment and there's a light item in here for vehicle maintenance slash garage. Does then that get affected or is that strictly for our city attorney and what she has under her contract?
Right, I believe that's an allocation for the city attorney's vehicle maintenance.
Okay, perfect, thank you. That's all I have, thank you.
All right, any further discussion or are we ready to move on?
No.
I need to call the vote. All right, so the motion before us is to amend this proposed resolution R23-158 to strike out the vehicle allocation for the deputy city attorney position and instead replace it with an annual vehicle stipend of $6,000. Did I understand that correctly?
Yes, Mayor.
All right, and we had a motion and we had a second. Let's call the vote. All those in favor of the motion to make those amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those who oppose the motion, say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously, all right? So thank you for proposing that. Now, are there any other items particular to this agenda item that you'd like to discuss?
No, Mayor.
Since you pulled it. All right, thank you so much, Council. This is your item. Did you have any comments you wanted to add before we do the final round of voting? City Attorney? Any additional comments before we call the final vote?
Oh, no, I don't have any additional comments.
All right, thank you with that. Any other comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve? I'm sorry, there we go, there's a hand. Go ahead, Commissioner Kelly.
All right, thank you. No, I just, you know, one of the things when we went down this road of going with the city attorney, you know, I made my position very clear and I will make it again that the city attorney needs support in order to make this transition successful. And so, you know, I am in favor of what she's proposing and would just, you know, although we did make this one change, it's also, we have to remember that this is competitive and we also, you know, I know that the city attorney is looking for the very best person for this job. And sometimes that means that we have to be competitive and we have to be able to offer incentives to bring somebody in who is the best fit for the city. And so although I supported the change in this, going forward, I will do everything to support the city attorney in making sure that this succeeds because this department has to succeed in order for us to continue moving in the right direction. So those are my comments. And I just, you know, thank you, Shawna, for all of your work since you've been here. It's been a very quick transition for you to get up to speed and be with us on the dais and be our support. So I just thank you for all of your hard work. I'm excited to see this department continue to grow. So thank you.
Go ahead, Commissioner Cruz.
Just last thing.
And we'll come back to you.
I didn't just bring this up out of the blue. I had a conversation with Shawna and I made sure it was okay with her before I brought it up at the meeting. So we did have a private conversation beforehand and she was in favor of the stipend. And because of that, I was, you know, we agreed that it was still fine with her candidate and, you know, we were able to move forward in that direction. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Hay, you wanted to say something?
Yes, I want to say that I think we, I'll speak for myself, do plan to work with you, support you, because we must be successful and you are the legal department now. What I would like to ask is, can you share with us how many more would be an optimum for your department from a legal standpoint? What would be, I mean, is it going to end up to be two, four, eight? Can you give some light on that? Share some light on it?
So unfortunately, at this point, there is no legal tracking of how many items go through the legal department. So one of the meetings we actually had today was with a legal software so that we will be able to actually track how many items come into the city attorney's office, the turnaround time, as well as which departments are needing which particular work. Based upon that, we can get a baseline now and then track how that grows. And depending on how that grows, then we could justify the potential need at some point of additional staff if that's necessary. I will tell you, in looking over previous legal bills, we were billed about over 400 hours last month for legal work encompassing six different attorneys in one firm. So I am hoping that, at least for now, we can do it with two very skilled and competent people. But until I have the software in place, I honestly can't give you an idea as to what other legal staff may be appropriate.
Okay.
I apologize, I don't have an answer just yet.
Thank you. Kind of a, but it's okay.
So what I understood from that comment was you are implementing processes in place so you can make a data-driven decision. We'll know more. May I ask what timeframe you're looking at? You're going to look at this a year from now and see what the volume of work is? Is that your thought or is it six months, a year? What's your thought?
Today, they advise the legal software as quickly, and that's part of the budget with regard to this is the provision of legal software could be implemented at 60 to 90 days. And then from there, we need to start a process with the departments where they do a request for legal services so that we can track, you know, exactly what we're doing and for which departments. So I'm thinking it would probably be appropriate in a year to take a look at that from a standpoint and what our additional needs are. If any, we may be able to do it with the staff that we have.
Will you also look at the other cities of our size to see what the norm is?
I can give you an update on that. I do have an update on that. With regard to West Palm Beach, they actually have 13 attorneys and they're slightly bigger than Boynton Beach. One of them is part-time, I will say. And then Delray Beach currently has, and I know Tenille just pulled all that information, but they have one city attorney, obviously, and then they have three different tiers of assistant city attorney. They do not have a deputy.
I'm sure if you want to chime in and provide additional information, what did you mean by tiers? Is that, there we go.
Next question.
So yes, city of Delray Beach, they do not have a deputy. They call her a senior city attorney. They also have like somebody that just graduated law school and they, she's paid about $80,000. Then they go to the next tier to, they're creating succession planning. And the next tier will be somebody who's really good at litigation. Then they have another tier that only deals with police legal items.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for Tenille or Shawna? Seeing none, are we ready for the vote? All right, so this resolution has been amended as previously discussed. This is item 6A, proposed resolution R23-158. May I have a motion to approve?
Move.
I heard the motion from Vice Mayor and the second came from, where did it come from, Commissioner Hay. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those who oppose the motion say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. The next item that was pulled was item 6D. This is proposed resolution number R23-161, enter local agreement between the city of Boynton Beach and the Boynton Beach CRA for funding construction and professional services. Is there anyone from staff who's able to speak on this? And while we have staff approach us, I'm going to turn to Vice Mayor for your questioning.
Yeah, just, I just, it wasn't so much questioning. I just wanted to give accolades because I know we were able to utilize some CRA funds and allocate them for some city projects, especially I think project manager, engineer is one of those. So, you know, we can hopefully deliver to the residents faster and, you know, so kudos to both the city staff and CRA for getting that done. That's it.
That was it? Any other comments or questions from my colleagues on this item? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve item 6D? So move. We have a motion from Vice Mayor, second from Commissioner Kelly. All those in favor of the motion to approve item 6D, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those who oppose, say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously. The three remaining pulled items are 6E, F, and G. Are they related items?
Yes, they are, Mayor, and I was going to.
Can we address them simultaneously?
Correct, we can. I'd like to ask Chief de Giulio, Ms. Sophia Stewart, and Jaclyn Smith to come up to the podium. And we could also address the cops grant if you'd like to. That way we can get everything out of the way.
If you're prepared for it. Okay. Sounds good. Police Chief?
Evening, Commission, Mayor, Vice Mayor. So the three items, E, F, and G are grants. The first one is the identification and fraud grant that allows the detectives work in those cases to go to have access to certain schools as well as some other resources to help them with a lot of the identification fraud type of crimes, which are extremely arduous. They take a long time, a lot of subpoena work. So it's a, it definitely helps their efforts when it comes to that. And property crime is the biggest driver of crime in the city of Boynton Beach. So that grant will definitely help us out on that. Aggressive driving, that allows us to put more officers out on the street in addition to what we have currently assigned on road patrol to do all the enforcement for speed. As you know, we do have crashes in the city of Boynton Beach and a lot of traffic complaints come across my desk. So this will allow us to deploy additional officers on overtime that's paid through the grant and that will help us basically like a force multiplier. We'll get more officers out there. And the outcome protections is basically the same thing. The difference is instead of looking for speed and aggressive driving, we're looking for child seat violations and seatbelt violations, which are primary traffic stops.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Cruz, you pulled this item, so I'll begin with you.
Wanted to give thanks especially to Jackie Smith for all the work that you've done. This is very positive news and we're really happy to see grants coming in. We love money coming in into the city and especially for these important efforts. I've heard a lot about carjackings and that sort of thing in my district and literally probably every single neighborhood that I've spoken to and it's been, you know, within the past year. So I'm really happy to know that there are funds that are going to be going towards that and just thank you so much for doing the work and receiving a positive outcome. Thanks to all of you, too.
Jackie and Sophia do a fantastic job. Besides these three grants, we also approved the pedestrian grant. I believe it was two commission meetings ago. We had the Stone Garden Grant, the Manatee. Also, they were integral in the radio tower. So they do fantastic work.
All right, thank you. City Manager, did you want to say a few words?
I'll just give just a macro overview of the cops grant. What it was is a federal grant. Jackie, can you come back, please? We're not done, ladies. Ms. Sophia?
Please, keep talking.
Come on. I want you guys just to give us a brief overview of what the cops grant is and just explain to the commission exactly what the city is going to receive from the federal government from and what kind of process it was.
Over the process, I'll go over the numbers?
Yeah, absolutely. If you could come closer to the mic, please, and just state your name for the record.
Jaclyn Smith.
And you can pull it closer to you. There we go.
We just literally received notice, you guys did. So once it's on the agenda, which won't be the next one because it's already closed, it'll be the following one, I think it's December 5th. You'll sign it and then we will start the hiring process. And it's for seven officers, four of which will, or will go towards the downtown district area and then three towards our violent crime task force to assist with the different stuff. It started 10-1, so as soon as we can start hiring and get it going. And the math numbers I don't have with me, so.
Why, did I say anything? No, okay. It was, it was, it was great that we were able to secure that grant. We applied years past and really never, we didn't receive it. I think the initiatives that were, the rationale behind it were fantastic to support the downtown area as well like a clean and safe team and also the violent crime task force to help us reduce violent crime. Also, part of that seven is that there's a requirement that we hire one to be a vet. Also, part of that seven is that there's a requirement that we hire one to be a veteran, which is really great. And we were going to try to raise that bar up and, and aim for at least three. So we, we think it's a, it's a great opportunity. It's a great opportunity to build the, our staffing to the levels where it needs to be. And we appreciate your support that you have in the past, giving us additional personnel. And we're, we're looking forward to adding the, the additional seven. As you know, we are fully staffed, which is a fantastic accomplishment. I thank my recruiting team and everybody in the police department that's been involved in it. It's been a collective team effort. So we're, we're in a, we're in a good position. We're looking forward to hiring the next seven. Well, my recruiters and background investigators are finally breathing and saying, no more backgrounds is fantastic. And now we have seven more vacancies, so. They did a great jobs.
All right, thank you. Any comments or questions for my colleagues? Anything else? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, no, I just want to say, great job, everyone. Thank you. Jackie, Sophia, Chief. I, I just got to say you put your money where your mouth is, you know, because I had brought up the downtown policing unit as we grow as a city. We have thousands of units coming in, you know, into the downtown, to District Three, to what we're trying to do, you know, right here on Ocean Avenue. I think it's extremely important, you know, not just to get staffed now. We're fully staffed, you know, that took a year and a half. But now we're preparing for what's to come. So instead of having this little period of where, you know, we're going to be understaffed and we're more people, we're, we're being proactive. And that was something that this commission decided on, on our first strategic vision meeting was to be proactive and not reactive. And, and you're the definition of that. So I appreciate you and I appreciate everyone over at the PD. And I definitely have noticed more police presence, you know, around my neighborhood, see vehicles around. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything else for my colleagues? All right, thank you so much to all of you. Thank you for your hard work. All right, so if there's no further discussion, I'm going to go down these three items for voting and we're going to vote on it separately, individually for each item. Item six E, proposed resolution number R twenty-three dash one six two, may have a motion to approve. We have a motion for Commissioner Cruz, a second from Commissioner Kelly. All those in favor of the motion. Again, this is item six E, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those who oppose say no. The ayes have it, motion passes unanimously. We're now moving on to item six F. This is proposed resolution number R twenty-three dash one six three, may have a motion to approve.
Oh, moved.
We have a motion from Commissioner Kelly and a second from Commissioner Hay. All those in favor of the motion to approve item six F say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those who oppose say no. The ayes have it, motion passes unanimously. We are now moving on to item six G, proposed resolution number R twenty-three dash one six four, may have a motion to approve.
Oh, moved.
We have a motion from Commissioner Cruz and a second from Commissioner Kelly. Again, this is item six G. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously. We're now moving on to the next section of the agenda, which is consent bids and purchases over one hundred thousand dollars. Are there any items that my colleagues would like to pull? I'll begin on my left this time, Commissioner Kelly. Any requests, any items to pull under this section?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Commissioner Hay?
None.
Vice Mayor?
No.
And Commissioner?
No.
Cruz. All right, so I would like to pull one item and that item is seven C. There was a stark increase in the numbers and so I wanted to make sure that not just my colleagues, but also the public is aware of the reason for this astronomical jump in the numbers. All right, with that, may have a motion to approve the remainder of consent bids and purchases. I heard a motion from Commissioner Cruz and a second from Commissioner Hay. All those in favor of the motion to approve the remainder of consent bids and purchases over one hundred thousand, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those who oppose say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously. So now we're going to address item seven C. Again, this is the annual expenditure increase to Garing Group as the city's insurance broker. I'm going to turn now to our HR Director.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commission, Tenille DeCoste, Director of Human Resources. If you recall, Mayor and Commission, on September fourteenth, the commission approved for the city to leave FMIT for our property casualty and workers' comp insurance to Pidgeot because there was a lot of savings and they increased the coverage. Previously, when we were with FMIT, we can pay, the city would pay FMIT directly. With Pidgeot, their policy is we have to go through the broker, our insurance broker, which is Garing Group. So nothing has changed with their, with the Garing Group. Their prices were increased. It's just we have to pay for our property insurance through the Garing Group now instead of directly to Pidgeot, like we were doing with FMIT. Do you have anything?
Hi, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner, Commission. My name is Morgan. I'm the Division Director of Risk Management. As Tenille said, everything is as close as what we approved on September fourteenth. The only change is that it does go through the broker just for purchasing. So it now with the increased expenditure will look like a more accurate number of what we're paying for insurance, not just through the broker services for ancillary policies.
And it's a, it's a practice because currently, right now, we pay our flood insurance with them and our accidental debt through the broker.
All right, thank you so much for the clarification. Are there any comments or questions for my colleagues? Anyone on my right, anyone on my left? Seeing none, may have a motion to approve. I hear a motion from Commissioner Cruz, a second from Commissioner Kelly. Again, this is item seven C. All those in favor of approving item seven C, say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, the ayes have it, motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much, ladies. We're now going to move on to the next section of the agenda, which is public hearing. And we are going to begin first by turning this to the city clerk, who will then swear in all the individuals. If you are speaking on any of the items under public hearing, item eight A, B, C or D, anything under public hearing, we are going to proceed with the swearing in. All right, now historically, we've done this with the city attorney. I've spoken with the city attorney and she has requested that this be done through the city clerk. All right?
If you can please raise your right hand.
Is there any, there we go, we've got many individuals.
Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Perfect.
All right, all right, so we're going to proceed and, say, Andrew, could you grab her? We're going to proceed with item eight A. This is proposed resolution number R twenty-three dash one six five. This is a public hearing to adopt a resolution of intent to use the uniform method of collecting non-ad valorem special assessment for canal maintenance for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. What I'd like to hear from now, so city attorney, we did do the swearing in. All right, and city attorney, would you like to introduce the item first and then we'll turn to staff?
Actually, Maylee, can you please introduce?
Yes, that's right, Maylee, if you could do that.
You can do it, Maylee.
So this evening, we are beginning some new protocols, so bear with us.
I'll announce it. It's proposed resolution number R twenty-three dash one sixty-five, public hearing to adopt a resolution of intent to use the uniform method of collecting non-ad valorem special assessment for canal maintenance for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five.
All right, let's turn now to staff. Thank you so much. Is it on? No, it's not on.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission. My name is Angela Primas and we have a presentation that you would like to hear.
All right, and who are you joined with this evening?
And she's joined with Chris Rochek. I'm Deputy Director of Utilities.
All right, thank you. Staff, if we could pull up the presentation and begin once it's ready.
Manny, oh, thank you.
There we go.
So we're here to talk about the canal assessment. And the presentation is to, could you go to the next slide, please? Manny? Oh, I'm sorry. So in the next slide, you can see the area that is going to be affected. This is only for a limited number of properties, who will be a hundred properties located around the leisure haven canal and the lay for eating canals. These are private canals. So the aquatic management is limited services. It does not include dredging or any capital projects. So the special canal assessment has been, the city has been providing these services and collecting this for three years now. So what we are proposing is to include it in the task role and which is called the uniform method of collecting non-ad valorem tasks. So it will be collected the same way that we collect like the fire assessment. So the Florida statutes require that we have a resolution. We adopt a resolution of intent and requires four notices to be provided. And we already provided the four notices. And this doesn't obligate the city to go that route, but we need to go through this process. And we will come back to commission if this is approved around the budget time next year, around June or July. And you will make the decision if we will use the task assessment or we'll continue to provide mailing the billings. Let me know if you had any questions.
All right, thank you. Let's begin on my right, Commissioner Cruz, if you have any questions or comments for staff.
No questions. Thank you for your presentation.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Nope, no questions. I mean, you know, this body decided to look into a permanent resolution for this issue over and the, there's a finger linking nails with that water flowing from Lake Ida. So hopefully, I'm sure this won't be the last year, we'll see. But, um, you know, it, it is necessary and I'm looking forward to that permanent resolution for this issue. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Hay?
I'm good with the assessment.
All right, thank you. And I know Commissioner Kelly's not in the audience in the dais in the moment, but we'll give her an opportunity to ask her questions later when she returns. So for now, I'd like to, if there's nothing else from staff, I'd like to move on to public comments specifically on this item. Oh, one second, Commissioner Kelly just walked in. I just want to make sure she has an opportunity. All right, sorry about that. No worries. I just, we're in comments or questions from the dais for staff on this presentation.
I don't have it. Yeah, no, and, and we've talked about this. I feel like ad nauseam during budget workshops, so I am, I'm fine with it. That's why I stepped out. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. We're going to turn now to public comment. If you would like to speak specifically on item eight A, now is the time to approach the podium. Okay, the comments have to be specific to item eight A. Let me switch the timer.
Susan Oyer, Secrest Estates, Barb told me to be nice and I am like, I'm already going to be nice. I'm all for this. You guys really need to be doing this. This neighborhood brings a lot of tax revenue into the city and they don't use a lot of services consistently, like some of the rest of the city does. And this has been a problem for a long time. This directly impacts our environment here in our city. So please support it and please vote for it.
All right, thank you. All right, last call, public comment on this item specifically. Afterwards, we'll go to those online. All right, state your name for the record and begin when you're ready.
This is, my name is Lillian Mayhew. I'm trying to understand what this does. Is this an ad valorem tax that will be added to everybody in the city? How does that work? I don't know if you can answer that question, but-
This is not a, let me pause the timer. This is not a Q and A, but we do have city staff around you. You could probably ask that question too.
Okay, but you're saying it won't be added to everybody's taxes.
This is not a citywide item.
Thank you.
All right, all right, we're going to move on to those online. Is there anybody online with your digital hands raised?
Mr. Mayor, there are no digital hands raised.
All right, with that, the item is now closed. I will turn back to my colleagues for any final deliberation. After which I'll entertain a motion to approve item eight A.
So move.
All right, we have a motion to approve item eight A and there is a second. The na- given the nature, Maylee, I'm going to ask for a roll call.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Turkin?
Yes.
Mayor Penzerga?
Yes.
In a roll call vote, the motion passed unanimously.
All right, thank you, city clerk. We're going to move on to item eight B. Again, the, we have already performed the swearing in ceremony. I'm going to turn now to our city clerk to read the item.
Okay, Mayor, and eight B is in regards to Athletic Angels, field number one, major site plan modification. MSPM two thousand twenty-three point ten point six three one zero two.
All right, thank you. The way we'll proceed is that we will hear first from the applicant from Athletic Angels. After that, we will hear from staff. After hearing both the applicant and staff, we will hear from my colleagues if they have any questions for either of the two parties. We will then turn to public comment. After public comment, I will return in reverse order. All right, and after all that has happened, we will have our final deliberation and voting. Let's begin with the applicant. Please approach the podium and state your name for the record.
That's Brian Casey from Athletic Angels Foundation.
Good evening, Wes Harden, LTG Sports Turf One.
And I'm Patrick Choi, LTG Sports Turf One.
All right, thank you. Please begin your PowerPoint.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, thank you for having us here to, to present our plans for the renovation of Field One at Boynton Beach Little League Park. You know, since this project began, a lot of time, effort and money on everybody's part has gone into, you know, making sure this project turns out something special for the city. Can I push it? Or down? Oh, there we go, okay. So this, this is an overview of the field and there's a couple of questions that, that have kind of come up from time to time. And one of them is this field is going to sit in the current location of Field One at Boynton Beach Little League Park. We're not taking that footprint and really changing it. So you can see from this overhead view, the first portion of the project will be to demolish all of the existing chain link fencing, the dugouts and the netting that goes around specific to Field One. The current grass and clay, excuse me, will also be removed. And then that is going to be replaced with artificial turf. The turf that we've selected for the field is similar to what they use in MLB stadiums, with the exception that the infield will be turf and not clay. This diagram also shows the outfield fencing. Centerfield fence will measure thirty feet high. The right and left side of that centerfield fence, the fencing will be twenty-five feet high. And then down the right and left field pole lines, fencing will be twenty feet high. That fencing will be a black vinyl chain link fence along the outfield and then along from the dugout to, to the foul poles. The dugouts then that were demolished will be reconstructed as significantly larger concrete structured dugouts that will have ventilation from the top so that they don't get so hot. The roofing will also have materials there that'll, that'll help keep the dugouts a little bit cooler for, for the participants using, using those dugouts. Along the backstop, we are not going to use chain link fence. We will be using the high-end, high-tension netting that you currently see used in most MLB fields and high-end collegiate league stadiums. So that does a couple of things. One, it makes for a better field of play, but it also makes it better for the spectators. It's much easier to see the field and you're not having to constantly dodge poles and look through a chain link fence. So there's a lot of advantages to- So there's a lot of advantages to having that as well. And then in right field, we also have netting that's going to be constructed behind the outfield wall that will raise thirty feet high, that will provide additional protection along Woolbright Road for any balls that may, maybe hit out as homerun balls. This is the diagram, a basic diagram of what the dugouts, the store, a little bit of storage on the outfield side of each of the dugouts. And that back, backstop fencing or backstop netting will look like the material underneath. And Wes, you can let me know here, but the, the, the netting will come down and will anchor into either a poured concrete or a stacked block wall that will be used for the backstop, which will have padding, padding along that as well.
Yes, that's correct. So the four posts that hold up the tension net system are actually anchored into the ground. Then we build a small CMU knee wall around that structure.
That's our project.
Oh, that was it? All right.
Very simple.
I've, I've just gotten used to like twenty, thirty, forty slides. Thank you. I appreciate that. You're going to get some brownie points for that. Let's turn now to staff. If you have any additional information to add.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commission. A pleasure to be here, Louis Ben Cosme. Staff doesn't have anything to add to the application. We did review the project against applicable requirements, which in man, and we recommend approval with the conditions that have been included with the item. If you have any questions, we're here to answer them.
So let's turn to my colleagues. Are there any questions either for the applicant or for staff while they're up here? Vice Mayor?
Yeah. Thank you guys for being here and thank you for your investment into Boynton Beach. Just a couple of points. What was the initial cost of this project?
I believe it was estimated at somewhere between one point seven and two point five million.
And, and where you, because I know there was a significant increase from the beginning to where it is now. Where, where is that now?
We're probably in that two million, two million range.
Okay. So thank you for that. The other thing is the timeline. What is the timeline that this is going to take? Because I know that the Little League utilizes that field for certain divisions. And so I just want to make sure, you know, if there's anything that we can do on staff side, you know, if this moves forward, that we can minimize any disruption with that season.
Yeah, absolutely. I believe, and Wes can speak to this as well, but I think we're in a three monthish.
Yeah.
Once, once we receive the permits from the city to proceed and the notice to proceed.
Probably ninety to one hundred, one hundred and twenty days, more on that, that lower end of that, that window.
Okay, perfect. And, and then for staff, I know there was a question about the wall. Andrew, I think we had both met with High Point, I think, too, with their president and some of their board members. And they were actually looking towards that, for that, for that privacy reason, I think.
Yes, correct.
Can you touch on that? I just, it's been a while, so I can't jog.
Yes, sir. So when I went out initially and we met with High Point to introduce the project to them, we met with High Point two A, which is the adjacent property that's adjacent to the park. One of their requests were to remove the existing hedges and chain link fences there now to provide a more permanent buffer, sound buffer between the park and their, their property. So that is something that we're going to take on as part of this project. We're, we're going to try to do that now and at the same time that Angels is doing their renovations in anticipation that when the future work comes, that it'll help defer some of that, the, some of the disruption you commonly get with construction, that they wouldn't be impacted as well.
Awesome.
And it also helped with the game time situations and nights and evenings to help with the, the noise and disruption as well.
Perfect. Thanks. Thanks for clarifying that because I think that was like close to a year ago when we did those site visits. And then just, just to make sure this isn't going to have, is this going to have an issue with, with any parking? Because we're talking about the field now. We're not talking about, you know, anything outside of this current project right now, correct?
Correct. This, this is not an expansion of, of this field. When we do the next phase, which is the, the, the contemplated prime time sports project, that will get additional parking when that phase comes in, as we'll be adding an additional field there. There are some provisions in here for us to do some temporary parking. If we see a, a need for it now, we can do some temporary grass parking in some areas that will be disturbed in the future.
Okay, so we, we've got a plan and we know, we know what we need to do to move forward and be proactive, make sure we minimize disruption. Awesome.
Only thing else I would mention is, you know, it's nice to have a local Boynton business doing this project. They also did our Hester project, so we're glad to keep those dollars local.
Yeah, that's, that's awesome. And thank you guys for continuing to participate and work with the, with the city. I think, you know, these are the type of projects, you know, that, that the community really benefits from when, when the private meets the public sector and we can deliver on something great for our kids. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Cruz, I just want to make sure I give you an opportunity. Did you have any questions for other parties?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you so much for your presentation. I did get to ask my questions with staff during the agenda review. I think the only thing that I think the public might want some clarity on is it's going to be a thirty foot wall. Is that correct?
It's, it's going to be a netting.
A netting, okay. So there's no.
So in, in, in centerfield, it will be a black vinyl chain link fence. And then on the right field side, there'll be foot, thirty foot high netting, similar to kind of what they have out there right now along the right field wall. That will be there to, to protect balls from going out. It's not actually a wall, but more protective netting.
Thank you so much.
It's just, it's just ball containment. It's that we want to protect over the road from any.
Absolutely. We definitely want to do that. So, thank you.
If I may, I'd like to clarify that the wall that is being discussed is not part of this project. That's going to be part of the other project that Andrew referenced.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. I'm going to turn now to Commissioner Hay, followed by Commissioner Kelly for any questions from the party.
I'd just like to say thank you. I'm looking forward to this project. I would like to ask, was there any additional parking done that on?
Additional parking as part of this project?
Yeah.
Uh, no, this was just for the renovation of, of Field One.
Always trying to get it. Job well done. Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. And I, I know it was brought up by Andrew, but I'm glad to see LTG back to in Boynton to do another project, your Boynton business. And I'm excited to, you know, to have you doing more work in the city. We talked about it at FLC and so I'm excited, you know, to see this happen. So I do have, have kind of just questions just for my own. But the fencing, so that we, so that I can kind of grasp what we're talking about or what the difference is. As far as, you know, the, the thirty foot mesh, which is, is fine and it's great. But what, what is in place now, just for comparison sake, for my own mind, just?
There's eight foot or a ten foot high fence.
Right, okay. I didn't think it was that big. So we're making it significantly bigger to protect the roadway, but also.
Road and anybody, any pedestrians that might be walking on the sidewalk and homes across the street.
And then I know we briefly, Vice Mayor asked about it, but I just, I wanted to hone in a little bit more on the timeframe of it. As I talked to staff, and I know you're really trying to get it, get this completed within a certain window. Can you just briefly talk about that so that I can make sure we're all on the same page?
I'll let Wes speak to that a little bit more. I think the, we've, just so everybody's aware, we have submitted for permits. We went ahead and did that to expedite the process. Barring, you know, any, anything that comes up in this meeting, we kind of went out there and did that so that we could get things done in a very timely, timely manner. So as soon as, as soon as we're able to go through that final permitting process and get the person, are able to proceed with the project, I think Wes can speak to the timing then.
Yeah, so this is a very straightforward project for us. Really all we're looking at is conversion of the natural grass surface to into synthetic turf with additional improvements with the fencing, netting and dugouts. So we, we, again, we anticipate about ninety to one hundred and twenty day window. And really, we, given the time of year that it is, without any errant storms and such, we do think that we can skew towards that front end of that window.
Great. I know I talked to staff and I just, kind of similar to what Vice Mayor said is, you know, I just, I really asked staff to make sure. And I'm just letting you know so that we're all on the same loop that we don't just, because it's my understanding that we're in a kind of a tight window with one of the higher age group travel balls that use that field. And so I want to make sure that the city is on top of making sure that if there's anything we can do to assist that team with, you know, that group with making sure that, that their schedule is disrupted as little as possible until this is done. That was something during my agenda review that, that I stressed to staff and I wanted to make sure that that was, you know, that this is exciting and we're, we're really excited about it. But we want to make sure that, you know, that our Little League teams don't feel like they're being, you know, slighted and that they're being taken into consideration in this project as well. So, thank you. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We have heard from both parties. We have heard from everyone in the dais. We're turning out a public comments. Again, this is comments specifically for item eight B, Athletic Angels Field One Major Site Plan Modification. After we've concluded with those in person, we'll go to those online. All right, so gentlemen, if you'd like to take a seat after a public comment has concluded, we'll return back to you and staff for final deliberation. All right, timer. All right, either one, somebody begin. Let's approach the podium. State your name for the record and begin when you're ready.
Lillian Mayhew, once again. I appreciate that, what they're doing to the ball field. I think that's great for the kids. I don't know about this company and what their obligations are, but I thank you, Mr. Church, and for approaching the parking issue again. So far, we really don't have any answer as far as the parking. I'm not hearing one. We do have quite a bit of parking in our private community. And we do have a lot of traffic running through our community every time there's, there's a ballgame. And we have handicaps and wheelchairs in there. This is an adult community. We need to protect our people. Those speed bumps are just annoying the residents. They're not slowing down the baseball people at all. As far as getting out of there on Woolbright, that is really difficult to do. And that's why a lot of them run through our community. I don't know if we can address a traffic light, even if it was only on and off during ball time games. But something, people just can't get out of there, so they're driving through private properties. So I would, I would appreciate whatever we can do as far as parking and not coming into our private community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next speaker on this item, again, this is item eight B.
Hi, Susan Oyer, Seacrest Estates, Boynton Beach. Whoa, that's loud, sorry. So I'm going to ask some questions that I haven't heard asked tonight. First of all, who gets to use this? Is this truly our kids or who are these people who are going to be using it? How much money are we getting to sell off a piece of our land or lease it out? Is this truly going to economically benefit us? This is already being used by Little League and the older schoolchildren. And I don't like what I'm hearing, that this is going to impact them. We already have our, you know, World Series winning kids using this and now you're taking that away from them. Are they going to still get to use this? I don't know. I haven't heard enough. And how are these people paying for this? And how are they going to earn back their money and make enough to make this profitable? Especially now that it's going to be another approximately half million dollars more, if not more than that. What's going to happen to the not too long ago planted Florida slash pines? You have a bunch of new trees. They're part of, planted as part of our city's climate mitigation. And what are you going to do with those trees? Where are you moving them? Those become several hundred foot tall trees. They're meant for our raptor birds. As you know, we have eagles in our city and hawks and whatever else is out there that I see flying around that I don't know what the heck they are. But where are these trees going? This was the perfect place for them. Parking, I don't need to bring up because we all know what a problem that is. And I think what you really should look at is making that street out if this does happen. Make it right turn. Only stop letting people make a left and crossing Wool, Woolbright and disrupting traffic. So that seems like an easy fix in all honesty. And maybe you should try blocking off the road into High Point because that is their private community. They don't need to have all these people going in there. And last of all, I'm going to say, say no to this. This is cemetery land. I've said it five hundred thousand times now. You get people up here constantly complaining that we don't have enough room to bury people. That is cemetery land that was always meant to revert back to the cemetery. And you're using it once again and trying to give it away. That is cemetery land. That is not land for us to just give away. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Good evening again, Barbara Riddy. In looking at the schematic, especially that one that's up right now, we currently have netting that runs from the backstop basically to left field and netting that runs from the backstop basically to right field to protect this way. I don't see any netting in this. I don't know if that's improperly drawn and not pointed out. But that is not going to protect these people. Because there's going to be foul balls flying out of that field. And field two, this is known as field one, just for the record. Field two is basically parallel. And those balls are going to be flying onto field two unless something is done to protect the other fields. I do want to continue to point out the deficiencies in the contract that you have with Mr. Barwess and the Athletic Angels. The deficiencies include giving him date specific that he's allowed to use the field exclusively, which leaves little room leeway for rain out dates when playoffs run beyond the time that they're allotted. And it states specifically in the contract that Mr. Barwess has the exclusive right to deny the use of any team that is not a legally registered Little League team, which would include the high school teams that play on our field because they don't have a field at their high school, middle school kids that play at our field. I have concerns. I have some concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to go to those online. ITs or anybody with their digital hands raised online?
No, Mr. Mayor, there are no hands raised.
Thank you. With that, public comments on this item is now closed. We will now return to, in reverse order, first with staff and then the applicant for any rebuttal or any comments. Staff, is there anything from staff?
Staff doesn't have anything additional to add. I would like to clarify that this is phase one of phase two. And the only improvements that we are looking at is the renovation of Field One. So there's been a lot of comments about parking and walls and, and those items we expect to see in phase two.
All right. Thank you for the clarification. Was that it, Amanda?
Yes.
All right, now we're going to turn to the applicant for final comments or any rebuttal responses to anything that's been said. Any clarification you'd like to make, et cetera?
The only clarification I would like to make is on, as it relates specifically to Field One, is the, the netting that will go from the dugout, this diagram up here that was brought up only depicts the backstop to the ends of the dugout. It does not depict the netting that's going to be in place from the edge of the dugout to the foul poles on either side. There will be twenty foot netting going down both sides of those all the way to the foul pole. And that's actually exceeds the height, I believe, or is very similar to the height of, of what's currently there. And in the far outfield, it exceeds the height of the fencing that's currently there.
All right, thank you. I'm going to turn now to my colleagues for any final questions and deliberation, and then we'll begin with the vote. Any final questions? Let me begin on my left this time, Commissioner Kelly.
I don't have any final questions, but my, I'm city manager. Can, can we get with High Point with, and the police department with regard to traffic and driving and, you know, safety of those residents? We need to take that into consideration. So if you could please make sure that happens.
During the, during the break, Vice Mayor approached me and I went back and I spoke to Captain Jose Rivera. He's in the back and he's going to speak to the young lady that was up here mentioning those points. So we've addressed it and we'll, we'll, we'll come up with a plan.
Thank you. Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hay.
Is there any possibility in the thought of putting a light there that is active during the game time that would not really impact to the degree that it would impede the flow of traffic as it should, should be?
Commissioner, I'm going to turn to our Deputy City Manager, Andrew Mack, to answer that question.
As stated by Amanda, this is phase one of our overall master plan, which we expect to come back to you probably within, in the month of December. As a part of that project, the master plan, we are proposing a traffic signal at this intersection. Again, this is still in the preliminary stages, so we're still going through. Once we have site plan approval, we'll be approaching the county and DOT. There are some engineering obstacles, you know, to installing a light there, but we do think we can overcome them and get a light installed here. That'll help with the, the traffic burden during peak hour, trying to get out through this section. In addition, I would like to mention that we've also, I actually met with High Point. We are working to pilot a, a road closure during game nights and weekends. Michael Pigny is going to be working with High Point to do some type of temporary, temporary closures. That's going to force the baseball patrons, parents that are going to the games to come and exit onto Wilbright. Additionally, we are working with them as well because during the day, we also have cut-through traffic that comes from Seacrest through Wilbright, through High Point. So we are, whereas multiple projects we're working on with High Point to try and curb some of the cut-through traffic and the speeding that's going through their neighborhood that are private roads.
All right. Thank you.
Just for point of information, thank you, by the way. What, what makes this particular project a major site plan modification? Is it the cost $3 million or?
So we have two different projects here. You have phase one, which is the renovation of the Field One. The second one is because we're adding the additional square, the actual building on site, which is the training facility. That's what's promulgating the requirement for the master plan, the master site plan change.
You had those two together?
Correct. So this one here is before you because it was a part of the contract that this comes back before you, the commission. In addition to the height of the fencing, it was appropriate to bring it back to get public comment and to make sure that we're bringing it to the public for transparency.
Okay. Comment?
He actually hit those comments right before I came up here. So it is those two things. First, that this is a public park, and since there are contracts between the city, we felt it appropriate for the commission to see these changes. And the second point is that typically in our code, we don't allow fences or nuts to go up 30 feet. But since this is a particular case with a particular use, again, we brought that forward for approval.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. My turn now to Vice Mayor.
Andrew, I just want to thank you because I know you've spent a lot of time on this, especially with the community and meeting with High Point. And, you know, I, I think there's some things that have been said. I think that, that's an issue that's a little, that's an underlying issue that we need to address. And I know, I know you're on and you're already brainstorming. You've been brainstorming for a year, and I've been watching you with this. And I just, I just really want to appreciate you because I know you've been thinking outside the box and really putting time and effort on how you can do this to where there's minimal disruption, minimal impact for the community and, you know, meeting with them and taking time, you know, going above and beyond, you know, past five, six o'clock and meeting with the community, you know, that means a lot. And, you know, I appreciate that. And I, I think that's how we're able to have that trust and that transparency with the community. So thank you, specifically with High Point.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Cruz, final comments or questions?
Nothing else. Thank you.
With that, may I will entertain a motion to approve.
To approve.
The motion came from Commissioner Cruz, the second I heard from Vice Mayor Turkin. I'm going to turn now to our city clerk. If you could begin the roll call.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Turkin?
Yes.
Mayor Pensilva?
Yes.
And a roll call vote. The motion passed unanimously.
All right. Thank you so much to everybody who took part in this, staff and to the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you guys. Much appreciate.
We're now moving on to items C and D because C and D are related items. I'd like to request that we process them simultaneously with the same procedure. Thank you. May Lee.
Okay. 8C is in regards to Guttersmith Major Site Plan Modification to Approve Request for a Major Site Plan Modification to Construct a One-Story 4,500-Square-Foot Warehouse Building Expansion and Related Site Improvements. And item 8D is Guttersmith Zoning Code Variance for Approval Variance Request from Part Three, Chapter Three, Article Three, Section Three D Three, Building and Site Regulations to Grant a Reduction of 4.3 Feet From the Required 15-Foot Interior Side Setback to Allow For an Interior Side Setback of 10.7 Feet.
All right. Thank you. Let's proceed now to the applicant. Same procedure as before. Applicants, staff, questions from the dais, public comment, reverse order, final deliberation and vote.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Bradley Miller with Urban Design Studio and here representing the Guttersmith Project. But if okay with you to present both at the same time?
Yes, absolutely.
And I did count my slides. It's not 30 or 40. I think I have 15, and I'm hoping I don't need all those. So.
Maybe slide duration or length should be part of the scoring. I'm kidding. I'm kidding.
That's right. So this, this site is just north of Boynton Beach Boulevard, west of, of Third Avenue and the railroad tracks. There's a little industrial commercial area back there. Guttersmith is a company that's been in Boynton Beach for 20-plus years and all okay?
Yes. If you could pause. Thank you. I'm hearing multiple conversations. So if you could take your conversation outside into the lobby, we would greatly appreciate it. Could, would, could you take your conversation just in the lobby? Thank you so much. All right. Thank you. All right. Please begin or continue.
So this is in that, the commercial industrial district and Guttersmith is a company that does gutter installation, repair, cleanouts, if anybody needs that. They've been here for 20-plus years and thankfully, they, they are, their business is growing and they have an opportunity here to, it's more than an opportunity. They need the expansion of this, this building for their, their business operations. Zoning-wise, we've got the commercial C4 zoning, which is appropriate for the use. And what they have, the red box shows really the parcel that we're dealing with here tonight. The white rectangle above it is their existing building where Guttersmith is existing. So what they're doing is expanding to the south. Some of the things that, that aren't so good on that picture are like the shipping containers, which are those yellow structures, the structures that are on the left-hand side of the, the red box are a couple of old dilapidated homes that are non-conforming. The approval of the applications here tonight is going to take all that away. It's going to be a paved surface. There's going to be landscape. There's going to be gates. There's going to be lighting. There's, which will be a huge improvement. And, and on top of that, additional assessment value to the property, which comes back, back to the city. The modification is the expansion is a 4,500-square-foot expansion. It's the, the bottom rectangle there. And the variance, as was read in, is, is, which I'll touch on a little bit later, is going to 10.7 feet from 15. So it's a four-feet, four-foot variance to the setback on the east side of the property adjacent to other commercial. That, that four feet, I calculated, comes out to 56 square feet out of the 4,500 square feet is, is that encroachment, and it's because of the angled line. But I'll show you that in a little, little bit more. This is showing that southern portion. What's being added to the property from today is the, the west side of the property, left side of the graphic is going to be a 12-foot-wide buffer with, with trees, hedges in there. There, there's already a wall along that property line right now, which this is up and adjacent to residential on the other side is, there's really, other than the wall that's existing, there's no vegetation there. So it's going to give separation. Then there's 18 feet of a drive aisle, the dark gray, to allow connection in between the two sites. And so fire can get around. So it provides separation away from the, the residential component. And again, takes away non-conformities of existing structures that are there now. Where the, the parking we have is, is actually provided on the existing site. So this area to the south is really just circulation for loading. There's going to be three overhead doors on both sides of the building that will be used, and it's purely just for storage of their materials that they need for, to, to conduct their business. No office space in there. There's also a connection from, from the existing building to this building to there to the top right, which is going to be a covered open-air area, kind of like a little break area for employees. It'll be there. And it connects the two buildings together out of the storm. This is showing the connection and the things that I was just mentioning with buffers around the outside. It's going to be a vast improvement to, to the overall condition of the site. This is showing a landscape plan, which is a pretty significant landscape for industrial, commercial area being added. Some of the plant material, including butterfly-attracting plants. Susan? Now, it's a code requirement. When I read it, it's, I call it the Susan Oyer Clause. This is the, the, the existing building is, is kind of this top color, taupe color. And so we're just matching up, up with that and then the connection in between the, the building expansion area. Going through these quickly. It's been a long night for everybody. This is the variance. That little red triangle is, is truly why I'm here. If it wasn't for that little red triangle, this, the site plan would have been approved by staff administratively. So that's the 56 square feet that's encroaching into a 15-foot setback by the most of 4.3 feet. On the east property line, we're putting in a buffer by code. And to the east of this is a, actually, it's a commercial business and there's a parking lot there. I drove by there on my way here tonight with, there's all kinds of trucks and everything else in there. No impact whatsoever. So this, this is just showing what we're doing with increasing the buffer on the western side and then how the, the buffer is going to be provided on the eastern side and around the perimeter of the south. And look at that. I did 15 slides in record time for a Bradley Miller presentation. Thank you. Here, here for any questions?
Thank you. Before we entertain questions for you, is there anything from staff?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Craig Pinder, Senior Planner. Staff's presentation is duplicative of the applicant. The applicant did a good job. The applicant did address all of the comments during the TARP review cycle. And may I for any questions?
Okay. Are there slides or it looks like there's about?
There are slides, but it's the same information.
Got it. Okay. All right. Let's turn now for questions from colleagues.
If I could add two more things. One, they are in support of both.
Yes.
And I think this is probably the least amount of conditions that, that are on a project that I've processed. So.
Let's begin on my right this time, Commissioner Cruz. Questions for either party.
No, it was really great to hear that Guttersmith's been in the city for 20 years plus, and seeing a local business expanding is something that I think we can all be very proud of.
They are bursting at the seams and calling us, you know, when is this going to be heard? When is this going to be heard? So next is to get into, spoke to Mr. Temple earlier and Mr. Koontzman about getting in for permits and crank it right up.
Yeah, it seems like a very.
It is, it is. I didn't mention it. It's a prefab building, and the reason that it's not fitting in that, it's a prefab building that our client purchased even before he came to talk to me. And the, the east side of the property angles. So if it wasn't for that angle or being able to, it was the, the square peg in the round hole situation. So the building is actually out there in pieces, laying there like an erector set ready to be put back, put into place.
Great. All right. I have no more questions.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I don't have any questions or comments at this time, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Hay?
I'm good.
Okay. Commissioner Kelly?
No, I have no questions. Thank you, Bradley, for taking some time today to just talk about this. I, and I'm, I'm glad to see the extra buffer with the residents. You did mention lighting. I guess, I do have a question. You mentioned lighting. I want to make sure that, that we're keeping in mind that those are residents' backyards. And so any lighting that would go into that new space would not, you know, cause issue in their backyards.
Actually, not, not even us, but your code already takes that into account for non-glare. And I, I think what they typically do on their existing property is, once business is over, those, those lights go, go down. But we get into this time of year when, when the sun goes out early, they need it for a little bit. But they're a Monday, Monday to Friday business, you know, eight to five. So they're pretty compatible with the, the adjacent residential.
Okay.
And this is nothing, nothing more than improvement for that compatibility.
Perfect. Thank you.
And I'll just, excuse me, I'll just add that the applicant did provide a photometric plan, and it was reviewed and conformed with the city's regulations.
Okay. Great. Thank you so much. That's all I have.
Thank you, everybody. We're going to turn now to public comments specifically on these two items, which are 8C and D. This is the Major Site Plan Modification and the Zoning Code Variance, specifically on these two items. After we've heard from those in the chambers, we'll go to those online. One second while I switch. All right. Begin when you're ready.
Thank you, Susan Oyer, Seacrest Estates. So Bradley, thank you for acknowledging the, the positive impact I had when I was on the PND board and got the codes changed and made everything greener. So yes, please call me the queen of green in Boynton Beach. My question on the lighting is, is it, is it going to be warm white lighting, which came up in PND years ago, where all projects are supposed to use warm white lighting outside as opposed to cool white lighting because it has been proven to cause cancer? So I want to make sure everyone's mindful of that. It should be warm white lighting. Thank you, Bradley, for making sure to include the butterflies. I know how much you hate it when the press mentions that. But I, I will suggest that maybe on that west side, and I think this is a fabulous project. This is well-needed. You know, everybody loves Guttersmith. They're fabulous. And I, I'm so glad they're doing this in this neighborhood. But I would want to think that the west side, and I guess we don't have it up anymore, maybe do Florida slash pines. So you have a big taller tree to block more of the light from the neighborhood and save those smaller trees for the east side where they're, they're more facing other industrial or public use so that, you know, you're taking care of your lighting issue. And I would, and I love that you're doing the butterfly plants, but I would really suggest coontie plants and sweet almonds instead of the fire bush, which can get very big and unruly, whereas the sweet almond smells nice and it attracts our Atala butterflies. We are one of the few places in Florida and the United States that still gets Atala butterflies. They're endangered. They're the black ones with the red dots, and they only go to sweet almonds and coontie plants. And you have to have male and female. They are the same price as every other plant. You can buy them at Home Depot, Lowe's, Bushel Stop. They're the same price. There's no price difference. There's no reason not to encourage more coontie plants and more sweet almonds, which I've said for years and years, and Bradley can attest to that. But I think this is a fabulous project. Please go for it. And I'm so glad to see something positive coming in that neighborhood that will really improve the business as well as the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no one else in the chambers, we're going to go to those online. IT, how many people have their digital hands raised?
There are no hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
All right. With that, public comments on these two items are now closed. We're going to return to staff for any rebuttals. Are there any rebuttals, comments? Seeing none. I'm going to proceed now to the applicant. I see that there are no rebuttals or responses. Thank you so much. I'm going to turn now to the dais for any final comments.
Second.
Okay. All right. So any further discussion for my colleagues? All right. We have a motion. It came from Commissioner Cruz, second from Vice Mayor May Lee. This is, to be clear, the motion is for item 8C. We're going to do this individually.
Yes.
Is that correct? And that's your second? Item 8C. All right. City Clerk?
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Turkin? Vice Mayor Turkin?
Yes.
Mayor Penserga?
Yes.
In a roll call vote, the motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Item eight C has passed. Now we're going to turn to item eight D. This is the zoning code variance approval of it. Is there a motion to approve item eight D? I heard a motion from Commissioner Kelly, a second from Commissioner Hay. With that, I'm going to turn to you, City Clerk.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Turkin?
Yes.
Mayor Penserga?
Yes.
In a roll call vote, the motion passed unanimously.
All right, thank you. That was item eight D. That concludes this entire section of public hearing. We are now going to move on to City Manager's report, update by City Manager and future agenda items. We will receive an update from the City Manager on pending items. City Manager, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to make this as brief as possible. I'm not going to go into the granular details, especially with the appropriations, which I'm going to be giving a updated to Vice Mayor's request. If you do got, if you do have specific questions, then we'll direct them to the specific department that that request can be answered for the rules, legal and so forth. So item A, adoption of the local rules and procedure quasi judicial rules pertaining to all official meetings of the City Commission of Boynton Beach, that's tentatively scheduled for December fifth. Currently, it is with legal and the city attorney. She's making revisions, but that's nearing an end. So I know that that was brought up earlier on in tonight's meeting by Commissioner Hay. B, discussion regarding annexation options and procedures. Currently, we have five areas that we've identified that we we do have water service or utility service agreements that give us power of attorney to annex those specific areas into the city. We're doing additional research into that. That item is also on pace to come back to the commission December fifth for discussion specifically. I don't want to get too much into the details of that because it's a very large item that requires quite a bit of I guess, data analysis. C, presentation of after action report for the forced main break near lift station three fifty-six at East Point Beach Boulevard. That was the sewage spill into the intercoastal that we had, I want to say, two or three months ago. That report has been completed. It would have been brought forth at a sooner date, but Dr. Calcott's had a family emergency and she had to go to India. She's been in India for probably about the last week. So when she returns, we'll be fully prepared to present that to the commission. Presentation by the Utilities Department on project to review existing utility infrastructure development risk metrics and prioritization of repairs and replacement projects brought forth and requested by Commissioner Cruz. We're currently working on with a consultant to do that. That's a large scale project that's probably six months to a year out of completion. So that's probably going to be. We can do the presentation for that, but as far as like the completion of it, it's it's going to take some time. That's a very in-depth request. E, provide update on grant funded projects in the capital improvement plan. That is on pace and scheduled for December nineteenth. Going for what we're going to do is we're actually going to compartmentalize the CIP projects by district and we're going to give quarterly updates. So the commission doesn't have to request that. And we could actually do that during City Manager, during the City Manager Report. So discussion regarding regulation, regulations to support local businesses. That's on pace. And I know the Finance Department wants to reach out to you, Commissioner Cruz, to get your thoughts on it. So discussion regarding existing regional programs and best practices to combat homelessness in the city. We've already started this with the the CDBG funds that R.J. Ramirez did a presentation on as far as I can't remember the the name. Rapid rehousing.
Yes.
Vida Nova. Vida Nova. That's what I was looking for, Mayor. So we're we're definitely making some leeway with that, Commissioner Hay. I know that was important to you. So and we're still in the discovery phase also of looking at some different options that we can bring bring back at the date annotated. Discussion regarding the art assessment fee being allocated to infrastructure instead of public art. We're looking for a date certain from the commission on that. So if you guys would like, we can provide a date right now during this update in the City Manager. Or if we have to add that later on to come back, because right now we have is a TBD. We'd need consensus from the body to move forward with that. So.
So my understanding is because this is something that staff has to prepare. I mean, we really depend on you to tell us when you're ready, right? So we're ready anytime I talk about anything, but is staff ready? That's the question.
So on this particular item, we were looking for consensus because we had it added, but it was for discussion. So I don't believe that that discussions happened on the dais yet. So that's what we're looking for.
We didn't get a date.
That we have consensus from the dais to move forward in which direction you're looking for.
Right. So I understand what you're saying. This is a discussion item currently. We haven't had a collective discussion, but before we can, I assume that all of you will prepare something to get guide in that.
We will take care of it, Mayor. We'll.
Just let us know when you're ready with that, because I think you determine the the date on this.
If I can add something?
Yes, go ahead. Yeah.
Yep. I wouldn't personally know how you know, what technical ways would be utilized to make the art assessment fee changed? Or maybe like understanding the history of how it happened. So maybe adding a little bit of context to the conversation or to the backup agenda so we can read it and then discuss it as a team.
We need something to discuss, right? And Mayor?
Yeah, and if if it's, and I brought this up, so I want to make sure, you know, I I reiterate, if it's feasible, maybe maybe that looks like dissolving the art fee and then putting in an infrastructure fee. You know, because again, my, I think the reasoning is important. My focus is on operational necessities. And so I think we can all agree infrastructure is an operational necessity as we continue to grow. And so I don't know what, you know, what legal restrictions there is with that, but I think this is, you know, the mayor hit it right on the head. We're waiting for what staff can come back and then we'll have the discussion with the context.
We'll confer later so we can get a date certain. The last item, I, discussion regarding combining city properties together to create senior affordable housing, Mayor. We'll also create a date for that so we can bring it back for discussion.
Yes, I do need to meet with staff on this particular item so I can, I think I may have already informally told you guys which properties, but we can.
You have, yes.
Yeah.
So that concludes the future agenda item update. I'm going to also provide an update. Sorry, go ahead.
Can I add one real quick?
Yes, I actually, Commissioner, would you mind just letting him finish? He was about to, and then we'll go around the days.
I'm I'm going into the appropriation submittals that we did this year as a for a procession and.
So with that, now that I hear that, let's just entertain any questions so far of all the things that have been said.
For thirteen D, you mentioned that you guys are going to get a consultant. I would like to have a discussion before we get a consultant and understand what the cost of it is. Understand what the scope of work, like the detailed scope of work is before we get a consultant. So I want that to be part of the initial discussion for us to understand how we want to move forward with that. And then we can always, you know, table it or make a decision and then bring it back at a future meeting for the actual final presentation.
Okay. So Commissioner, if I understood you correctly, you're saying before staff jumps ahead and hires a consultant, let's just come back to us first with what those options look like and
Exactly, yeah.
how that would help.
Like this scope of.
Something more generic.
Understood.
Something more detailed, really, just to understand like what is it that we're going to ask the consultant to do? And that sort of thing.
Do you want to bring this item back on this date as a discussion item as opposed to how it's marked now as a presentation? That way we can, if you want further direction.
Was that your original intent, Commissioner?
We can have it as a presentation. I mean, we can always discuss anything afterwards, so it's not a problem.
So I think part of the clarity here is that the Utilities Department was already working towards this project. So the timing of it was very timely to actually discuss this. So they will be bringing this project forward. So really, they're just going to be talking about the project that they they would like to do. So we'll bring that forward to you. They had the presentation. Again, this would have been as a part of tonight's actual meeting, but because of Dr. Calcott is out of town.
Okay, thank you.
Just out of curiosity, does that mean they've already hired the consultant?
I believe they have a task order. Chris, can you come up and speak to that?
It's okay if you have, if you've already been working on it, that's good. I'm just curious where you are.
Hi, good evening. Chris Rochek, Deputy Director of Utilities. No, we have not hired. We we haven't finalized the scope of work. We actually have a meeting tomorrow with our consultant.
That's what I wanted to see, the scope of work. Yeah.
So if we could bring that forward before we, we'll have to bring the task order forward anyway for approval. So we can either do that in a discussion item or as a a regular agenda item at that time.
All right, thank you. Is there any other questions for the current items that have been discussed so far? All right, seeing none, City Manager, please continue.
I know it's getting late, so I'm going to, I'll go through each one of these and if any, any one of them pique your interest, we can go a little bit more in depth into them. So we submitted the first item, which was a Boynton Beach nine eleven communication center generator replacement. I can tell you from speaking with our lobbyist firm, Ballad Partners, specifically Matt Force, I know a lot, most of you are familiar with him. He's very, very knowledgeable what the legislative body looks for in appropriations. And he, as far as the, I guess, the strategies around it, providing matching funds, what the governor is going to veto, what he's not going to veto. Right now in Tallahassee, public safety is one of the important ones. Any sort of stormwater projects that can be beneficial to a whole community. If you have projects that are going across into other municipalities, joint jurisdictional projects, those are have a high likelihood of being approved. The other thing is it's not just about being on the offense. Sometimes we have to be on the defense. And the the Vice Mayor and I went to Palm Beach County Days last year and there was a sanitation bill that we successively got, I guess, some of the recommendations carved out that would have been harmful to the city from a revenue standpoint. So we we, it's not always about getting appropriations approved. Sometimes it's about successfully defending the city on on that standpoint. So the second one is, and I'm sorry, the the appropriations the city seeking on that project specifically for the generator is six hundred thousand. The second one is a neighborhood connectivity Sky Lake project, and we're seeking one million dollars in appropriations. The third is Pioneer Canal Park Boat Ramp Improvements, and we're seeking five hundred and sixty-four thousand. That's also near the Sky Lake area. The fourth is the Harvey Oyer Fishing Pier, which obviously we just did the renovations of the boat ramps over there. So this would, we're seeking eight hundred thousand dollars on that. And the fifth is Lake Shore Bridge Canal Project. That's over on Mission Hill Road, which was brought up during this year's budget hearing, and we're seeking one point one million. And these all have matching funds. I have the appropriation paperwork that I can, if you guys want to know what the matching funds are. But that's the five projects. Speaking to the our our firm that we work with, they said no more than five. So and no less than two. And we we spoke with Matt Force this week, had a great conversation. He liked all of our projects. So he's going to triage them appropriately for submission. Thank you.
Any questions for my colleagues? All right, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, just I just want to reiterate, you know, when when we put these forwards, that we're not just reaching out to our designated state representative. I've spoken to a few to the north and the south of us that will help us lobby for these appropriation requests.
That's definitely being taken in consideration, Vice Mayor.
Thanks.
City Manager, just out of curiosity, could you just describe the process by which these items were developed and selected? And related to that, besides how they came about, are there others in the pipeline? Like, are there, is like a waiting list of ideas or?
There are specific parameters or how the appropriations have to be looked at and submitted. It has to be budgeted, not started. It has to be able to be completed within a certain amount of time. So some of the projects like, and they couldn't have already been completed because one of the projects we actually wanted to submit for appropriations was our forced main break that we had on East Point Beach Boulevard. We weren't able to do that because it didn't fit the parameters whenever we looked at. So I know new grants manager name, I want to call her Mirna. Is that correct? Yeah, she's been great. I know. Is she here? She's not? Okay. She's she's been great. She came in probably a few months ago when Tess left and she's really taken the bull by the horns and really helped to step up our game. I I can tell you that some of the processes, Mayor, that we've used in the past have been a little antiquated. I think for the most part, we we kind of treated it as a nuanced process, but we are revamping that and we're definitely being more comprehensive with the way we plan things and submittal. So.
So these are staff developing, staff selected proposals?
Correct, yes. But they have their staff selected. Obviously, the commission approved. These are already CIP budgeted projects that we have that can obviously save us money in the CIP budget in the event they are approved. So.
All right, thank you. Any final questions or comments on this for the City Manager's report? Commissioner Kelly?
Just with regard to the appropriations and I know and grants. After the FLC conference, I know I sent it to Catherine. I may have sent it to you also, City Manager. The National League of Cities President, she was talking about, it's an infrastructure hub website that is all infrastructure, federal infrastructure grants. And NLC basically partners with the city to walk them through the grant process on particular grants that the federal government has. And so I'm glad to see these appropriations and that we're maxing out the appropriations locally. But I want to make sure that we're also making sure that we're maxing out on opportunities federally, especially when it comes to, you know, to our our key and important, you know, things kind of the same that we're looking for on the state level as far as public safety and infrastructure and 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 those things. So I just wanted to to remention that. I do still have the link. I'm happy to provide it to whoever you know, wants it from the city, but you, it's amazing, this hub, you type in exactly what you're looking for and there's hundreds of grants that are available. And like I said, NLC is partnering with cities to make sure that that they're going through the process correctly. And they're to give us the most, you know, the best opportunity to actually get and be successful with getting those those grants.
I I do appreciate that. And I do remember what you're talking about. As a city, I can tell you, we we have, we we're at the max of our bandwidth when it comes to CIP projects. So when it comes to submitting for grants, even though there is free money available, you you know this well, that if we don't spend that money, it gets sent back. And that that's really not the prudent course of action that we want to take from from a a city standpoint of sending grant money back. So the appropriations that we've submitted here, the ones that we've actually got, I know what's the project we have going on right now in Sand Castle area? That we're doing the stormwater improvement project for?
That's a DEO grant.
The DEO grant, sixty million. So we we are going to continue to submit for grants. We just got to make sure from a city standpoint that we're prudent and we're going to be able to complete these projects. So.
Got it. Thank you. I'll just keep talking about it. It's okay.
I wish we had more staff and we could, we could do a whole lot more.
Ditto your sentiments. All right. Anything else from my colleagues?
And the the mayor did attend a a conference in Ohio and he sent us some DOT grants as well. We haven't forgotten about that.
Yeah, the the DOT was in DC, but yeah, directly from the DOT. We had a little insider preview of what these grants were, and that's why I went to DC to get advanced access. But the constraint is, you know, it's really difficult to hire enough people with enough qualifications to pursue these. I understand it's a struggle. But we do our best. All right, City Manager, were you finished? Was there anything else?
Yes, I'm complete, Mayor, unless you guys have any more questions.
I'm seeing none from my colleagues. We'll continue now to the next portion, which is unfinished business. This is ten A, discussion regarding an infrastructure and public safety bond referendum for upcoming March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four election presentation to discuss and provide. and provide staff direction to pursue an infrastructure bond and public safety referendum again for the March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four election. Before us, we have Casey Young. Casey, please begin.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Casey Young, Recreation and Parks Director. I'm here tonight along with representatives from Boynton Beach Police Department and the Fire Department to discuss the infrastructure and public safety bond, to bring discussion before you. The infrastructure, the infrastructure and public safety bonds are general obligation bonds, or GO bond, which is a form of debt obligation that provides local government with funds to finance large capital improvement projects. A citywide voter referendum is required prior to the issuance of a GO bond. The bond would provide a new funding source to improve the city's infrastructure along with enhance and expand the park system to provide services for, for residents. Again, the timeline for this project to take place tonight, I'm here to continuation of the discussion for Commission. Then the next step in this process would be November twenty-first. We would want to bring back ballot language for Commission to review and approve. Our deadline to have to, the supervisory election would be December nineteenth with hopes of having the, the bond referendum for, ready for the March nineteenth election. Staff has compiled a list of highlighted infrastructure projects that the bond could fund. Projects include road resurfacing, city beautification, streetlights, waterfront improvements, traffic calming, neighborhood drainage improvement projects. Again, these are some highlighted projects that the, the bond fund could be used for. This is not the extensive list, it's not the only projects that could be listed, but we wanted to give Commission an idea of some of the projects that could be funded through, through a bond. Continuing on, these are, again, infrastructure, the infrastructure bond could also fund projects that would expand and enhance the park system. Some of the highlighted projects include the Boynton, a, a brand-new Boynton Beach Senior Center, a new recreation center west of I ninety-five, Little League improvements, Prince Park improvements, which is one of the oldest parks in the city, John Denson Aquatic Center, Harvey E. Orier Park improvements, Oceanfront Park improvements, and then our, our neighborhood park improvements. Again, these projects would help to modernize, redesign, you know, provide a, a enhanced system for our residents. Again, just to bring up, you know, some of those projects that were just mentioned were some of the projects that were discussed during strategic plan along with recommendations from the park system master plan that received feedback from residents along with surveys and, and public output. So again, these are projects that we feel will, will help to enhance our, our park system. This side goes into detail of some of the options. This is the infrastructure bond option. It gives a list of options here, of funding options, along with the estimated annual cost to residents. Staff is recommending the seventy million dollar option due to the number of projects and the improvements that we could provide with this funding. With that said, I will now turn the presentation over to Representatives from Boynton Beach Police Department and the Fire Department to discuss the public safety bond.
Good evening, Matt Ziller, Deputy Chief, Boynton Beach Police Department. Again, these are the items that we identified at the Boynton Beach Police Department that are really geared towards the infrastructure of what we do on a daily basis, the public safety, additional building, PD station as we continue to grow as a city, telecommunication, communication tower, public radio system. They go hand in hand. That's our communication with the officers and our communication center. A citywide security camera infrastructure within the parks, in addition to other city facilities. I can come back to our real-time crime center, our gun techs and technology also coming back to the real-time crime center. And the communications center improvements, obviously that is where all the calls come in. Our communication dispatchers receive that, want to make sure that they have all the technology and resources for their success.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Hugh Bruder, Fire Chief. The second half of the public safety bond, we're pretty much reiterating from the first meeting. Primarily, we're looking at this, and when, when we, you had questions last time in terms of, what, what do we want to do in terms of long-term projects as opposed to short-term projects? And I know Commissioner Kelly had some concerns about this in terms of like the radio system, which may not be a thirty-year type project. So that could be something at the will of the Commission that obviously can be removed. But it is one of our needs and it is part of infrastructure, so we, we've added that and continued that within this bond proposal. And then we'll leave it up to Commission, obviously, to decide, you know, what you want to fund or not fund. So what you're seeing here is a reiteration from the last meeting. That's the fire station three rebuilding and improvements, ten million dollars. Obviously, the communication center for EOC, which is in bad need of upgrades, that is about twenty years behind in terms of the technology within the emergency operations center. So obviously, we would, that, that's a major priority, so that if we do have any kind of major civil unrest or any kind of major issue, whether it be a hurricane or man-made situation, we, we can address it appropriately. And the rest of the money, the Marina Complex, which encompasses both the police and fire marine operations divisions, new station recall system, that, that's actually a very important one because that station recall system would save actually sixty, sixty seconds of total response times for, for fire. So that's actually very critical. You know, we know in the golden hour, you know, in that, that ten-minute rule, you know, with people in cardiac arrest, every, every minute does help. So that, that is one in which we, we feel is very important. And then there's some other stations that need some work because of the aging infrastructure. And of course, our logistics and fleet facility, which will ultimately save the city a lot of money, and it will allow our, our fleet and facilities to be able to have some very badly needed space, and that, that's very long-term. So I, I would say out of the Fire Department's projects, in, in terms of long versus short term, other than the radios, they would all be considered long-term projects. So, do you all have any questions for us at this time?
All right, thank you, Chief, and thank you, Casey. Let's turn now to my colleagues.
I'm sorry, that's.
Oh, there's more?
Yes, there is more, sir. So again.
Please continue.
The way the, the infrastructure bond and the public safety bond is, will be set up is that there would be two separate questions on the referendum. So again, this is a, options for funding directly for the public safety bond. And again, staff is recommending twenty-five million for public safety. Just again, just to reiterate that the projects that have been listed, it's not the, the final list. Again, we're just kind of highlighting some of the projects that the bond would be able to fund. Again, one of the plus, for, one of the, the pros for the, the bond is that, you know, there aren't many restrictions to the bond as far as we can use the funds for expansion, for repairs, for improvements, where some of our other, other funding sources have some restrictions. Again, we brought this presentation before you tonight as a discussion topic, you know, with, you know, four topics for the Commission to discuss, which includes, you know, support for the infrastructure bond referendum, also the bond amount for the infrastructure, also support for the referendum for the public safety bond along with an amount for that bond as, as well. And with that, that concludes my presentation. We are here for questions, but again, we, we open it up for discussion, and I'll bring the slide back.
Thank you. Four different items to, for discussion items, I should say, and I don't know which side wants to go first. Okay. Okay, nobody wants to begin first. Somebody just go.
I can ask a question, I can ask a question.
That'll start us off.
I do have one question, and I'm, it might be for Mara. And I'm, for, is there, um, is there, let's say, we agree with something tonight. It goes on the ballot, it's voted on. Is there an opt-out for residents who are in need or seniors just like some of our other assessments through taxes? Is there an opt-out, is there an opt-out ability for certain residents in need?
So I believe similar to the non-ad valorem and the tax bills and whatnot, they would be subject to the same exemptions for, you know, the homestead exemptions. This is a millage rate on their tax bills, so there are additional exemptions. The senior, the.
The low-income senior.
Low-income, a lot, all of the same exemptions that would be for the tax bills, so.
Okay, okay. And then, you know, I, and thank you, Casey, for bringing up, you know, one of the things that I, or actually, no, it was Chief Bruder who brought it up. You know, the, I, my concerns with a bond and, and I, and I understand and I know that these are just kind of like wish lists to give us ideas of what's going on. But I really want to be cautious with how we look at spending this money. You know, this, these aren't, these are items that can't be or are not necessarily a budgeted item or couldn't fall within the fire assessment or, or something else. These are truly, this is, you know, and, and I, I said it before and I'll say it again. This is a thirty-year bond. This is not something where we do everything and then we're still paying for it, and yet we need more money because now we're trying to advance or improve things that we paid with this bond money. And so I'm, I'm really, I'm just putting my concerns on the record again that, you know, this is not, this is something that, that I know, I personally am, and I am a resident and a taxpayer. And so this is, you know, I want to make sure that if this is something that goes forward and the residents support, that we are very cognizant of this, of how we spend this money and how we use this money. Because this, it has a, a thirty-year life expectancy and a third, and we need to make sure that, that we are being fiscally responsible with this. Money should it pass. So those are just my, my comments for now. I don't necessarily have any questions. I kind of want to see where my colleagues sit, but those are, those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hay?
I do share a lot of the concerns that just mentioned by Commissioner Kelly. One of the hardest things to do is to get a bond passed, especially when you're talking about, if we go with what you recommended, I think the two add up somewhere around a hundred and ninety dollars per resident. It's a lot of money in this age and time. Have you looked at prioritizing the list of your wish lists, I'll call it? Would love to get everything on there, but it's going to be a, up here a climb. Have you tried to look at what is really needed? I, I know Chief Bruder mentioned long-term, short-term. Like, we could probably not go with the radios or something like that. There, there seem to be some other items. I, I guess I'm saying I, I love to see the minimum that we would definitely want short-term versus you have the long-term here, the wish list. Certainly, that, that, that top number of a hundred and ninety dollars, I think it was, for the first one and can't remember what it was for the, it was, I'll go back to that. That's the sixty-six dollars plus the hundred and.
So the combined cost, if we were, there we go.
Combined cost, so.
There we go, I think this is.
Yeah.
Is this combined? No, it is only for infrastructure alone.
Right. Still talking about a hundred million dollars, two hundred and fifty bucks per resident, roughly.
Every year for thirty years?
For thirty years.
Yeah, every year for thirty years.
Every, every year for thirty, for thirty years. I guess I'd just say let the, let the people decide in the referendum. As a taxpayer, yes, I could afford it, but everybody can't. So I want to do my due diligence and consideration for those who already have in trouble with the millage and everything else, the assessment, fire assessment, and you name it. So I, I guess where I am right now is to talk about this a little bit more in terms of what, what's really needed and what, what could we kind of push off till later. I, I could support the recommendation, the seventy-five and the twenty-five, I believe it was.
Correct.
Which. But I just feel that we could, we could, we could squeeze it down a little bit more. I really do. All of this is, is not necessary, it's a wish list. What would really benefit the city of Boynton and citizen the most right now? Well, not right now, but short-term. That's what I would like to juggle with, move around, see if we can bring this down a little bit. I would not want to go to my neighbors and tell them about a two hundred and fifty dollar on their bill for the next thirty years. That just wouldn't, wouldn't go over with me, even though I'm not running for reelection. But, but that just wouldn't fly. I, I, so I, I would need to talk a little bit more with the powers to be on. What, what, what really can we tweak here? Okay?
So again, just to comment on that, a, a, again, this isn't the, the full list. We haven't prioritized the list. Again, we brought forth some projects that we have heard during, again, strategic planning, during discussions, during the park system master plan. Again, needs that the police has identified, along with the Fire Department has identified, just to kind of give you an idea of what is. Before it moved forward to referendum, obviously, we would have an opportunity to, if it's to give more long-range projects or, or different projects, that's something that we obviously could work on and bring, you know, and have available.
Casey, I just, I want to add one, a couple of things here. I know, obviously, everyone on this board went through the town square litigation process of a P-three bond where you essentially remove the power from the people to vote on a project and you put it in the Commission's hands. And I know Mara's here, what's the interest we're paying on that bond, Mara?
We're paying about forty million dollars.
Forty million dollars? So we're, we're trying to do things the right way by putting the power back in the people's hands to actually vote on these projects. The other thing is, we also have the uncertainties surrounding the county surtax that we're using probably about four point three million dollars a year. Some of the CIP projects that we have budgeted from twenty twenty-five out. If that surtax is not renewed by the county, we're going to lose that four point three million dollars. And currently, we do not have anything that's going to supplement that four point three million dollars. So I just want to make sure that the Commission understands some of the reasons behind going forward with this. And in the event that the community doesn't want it, they'll vote it down.
And if we do lose that four point, will we lose services?
You won't lose services, you'll severely cut your CIP projects. So a lot of the projects that we've moved forward and have budgeted currently, and we roll over from year to year, like we had some CIP rollovers tonight, we'll have to look at cutting some of those, so, and Andrew.
I think, I think one of the things that we'll be looking at.
I think, I think one of the things that we'll be looking at, if the infrastructure, the surtax does get renewed, you know, that'll definitely help. But we've already made some tough decisions. Harvey or your fishing pier, that's, it was passed its useful life and we don't have the funds to replace that right now. So that, that actually has been taken out of service. So that'll be what'll end up happening where we start looking at infrastructure or, or parks or things that we have. And we're going to have to make some very hard decisions on, do we wait till we can afford this? Or do we borrow money? Or, so these are all the conversations that we will be having. If this doesn't move forward or if this surtaxes get renewed. I mean, you know, we do have some items, park impact fees were mentioned, I think at the last meeting. That will help. I think we'll, you know, we could get up to where $2 million based on some of the projections I've seen. Police impact fee, which is going to be on the, the discussion tonight, that will also help. So I think all these buckets together will help. Think there's not one size fits all solution. But this is a start in the right direction to bring this to the voters and let them decide what they feel like they can support financially. You know, I, I think our ask tonight is not so much by the project. I think they're all needed. Some are more needed than others. I would say that Station 3 is are one of the oldest stations in the city. That station really needs to be rebuilt. So I think the projects you're seeing in front of you are the ones that staff feel like are important, important to the community, important to need as far as being replaced. So I do think that list you have is, is not an exhaustive list, but it's a good representation of what's needed going forward. And again, we're looking from you guys, you know, you are in the community. You know your, your constituents, your neighbors. You know what they can afford or where you feel like they would support on a referendum ballot. And that's really ultimately what we're asking tonight is what bond amount? If, do you support the bond, whether it's yes or no? And then what amount do you feel like this community could support?
I could have support the recommendation of staff. This is a big, big ticket item here. And would we consider bringing in a consulting firm to help us to market this? Because I, I don't think what we've been doing in the past is going to, is going to sell it down the road.
We, we have, go ahead.
So, so again, that would be our next step. So again, if, if we do gain your support this evening to move the bond referendum forward along with the amount, we would reach out to a consulting firm to, to assist us with advertising and promoting and educating the community on, you know, the benefits of the project. You know, the projects that are, that are being recommended for use of the funds, how the funds we, would be used in order to gain their support when it does go to, up for vote. So again, that will be our next step. Once we understand, once we know exactly, you know, what the amount is and, and have your support for this, that will be our next step to, to really get out into the community and have those discussions and really get people excited about, I almost say excited. We'll get, educate the public on the benefits of, of this funding source.
With that being said, I, I would support staff recommendation.
For both the infrastructure and
25.
For public safety, 75 for infrastructure.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Before we move forward with the dais, can I go back to Commissioner Kelly? I know you had some, expressed some concerns just out of curiosity, just so for discussion sake. What would need, what needs to be addressed? Can we address the concerns? What needs to change or what needs to happen to alleviate your concerns? Maybe that's a better way of saying it.
I don't know that there's anything that need, I am just putting my concerns on the record.
Understood.
That, you know, I, you know, moving, if this moves forward, that we need to be mindful of the fact that this has to last 30 years. And it's great to have wish lists and it's great to have these items and being able to check them off. But at the end of the day, I'm a resident and if I'm paying for this for 30 years, I don't want to be hearing at year 15 that the city has used all the bond money. And now we're needing to figure out what to do with our parks and our infrastructure and having this whole conversation again. So those are my concerns moving forward. I'm just putting them on the record so that we're not, if this passes, we're not just spending money willy nilly on all these random projects and not really being cognizant of the fact that we are taking out, we would be committing to 30 years of this money needing to last.
Commissioner Kelly, you and I are actually, unbeknownst to you, we're actually on the same wavelength. I have similar concerns. And so perhaps let me ask this question to staff. You know, my worry is whether it's year 15, 10, 15, 20, what if the projects change and the money is not spent according to what we thought it was going to be spent on? Is that a possibility?
Mayor.
And how would that be controlled and managed?
You guys will be the checks and balances of these funds.
Well, I won't be here 15 years from now.
But the collective body, the seat will still be here. So at the end of, at the end of the day, the commission will hold the approval authority over how the money is allocated and spent on what projects. So in the event that you're not here, Commissioner Kelly, obviously your successors will be here. So they'll have to exercise the same prudence that this body's exercising. And the kind of questions you guys are asking is the exact same questions I've asked my staff. It's important that this money does last, it's not exhausted on wish list items. These are operational necessities or CIP necessities that the city can benefit for decades to come.
Right. And one thing, Mayor, real quick, that popped into my head is, as we're having this discussion. And Shawna, this might kind of be a question for you. You know, we, we, and the city is successful also based on tourism and visitation. Do we have an option as a local government to implement a kind of a, kind of like how the county has a surtax, a sales tax or an additional tax that we could benefit from visitation and tourism to assist us in some of these things? They're using our parks, they're using our facilities. Is, is there a way, a mechanism that we can capture some of that from that tourism here locally as opposed to the county tourism board and the money going elsewhere? Is there a way that we can capture that money here locally?
I can answer that question.
Okay.
So the city actually does collect sales tax revenue from the state. It's a state shared revenue. So we do get a percentage of the sales tax revenue for sales that are within the city limits. There is an option to add an additional, you know, if you're paying 7%, 7.5% to sales tax as part of that. Again, it's the same process. It would have to go to referendum. It would be in, similar to the penny surtax. That is an option. One of the things I did want to address, so, you know, one of the things we talked about internally and, you know, the city manager mentioned that, you know, he tasked staff with this conversation was that this funding is a 30 year funding source. And one of the things from a financially prudent background is looking at the funding source and does it match the length of the assets or whatever you're purchasing with that? So anything that we put into this plan would have to essentially last the life of the funding source itself. It would be a master plan. We would build something that ultimately would go to referendum. It'd be a long range understanding of these are the projects that are laid out. And it would come back to the commission each year as part of the budget process and get approved similar to this CIP.
Okay.
You said annually?
Correct.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So I just, I, you know, I, I know it's kind of at the, at the last minute. I, did we consider or think about doing a kind of a sales tax, surtax, either in place of or in addition to, because I mean, that's, I use our services, I use our parks, I use it. So I am personally okay with knowing that I have to, you know, pay for what I use. But I really want us to, to look, and it, to look at, you know, trying to capture that tourism aspect because we do have visitors that come in. And, you know, it's, it's a little easier to have a 0.5% sales tax on every dollar when you buy your coffee or your groceries or, you know, stay in a hotel or whatever than our residents having an annual assessment for a bond. So I know it's a little late in the game to bring it up, but it just popped into my head tonight to, you know, to consider that, you know, as we move forward also.
It's an option. I know we haven't talked about it internally. We certainly could look at it. What I would say is that it's an indeterminate amount of funding. So it's based on, you know, how many people come in and out. This is, you know, you have 35 million, you can definitely put that into a long range plan. So from that perspective, but absolutely, yeah.
Right. And very similar to the county surtax, you know, we've, you know, it's, it's fluid. But it can be used for, hey, we all of a sudden need to, to change out something or, and we have that, you know, or, or we need to improve the beach or we need to improve something or we need to enhance, you know, our, our ride share or something. And we have that tourism, kind of tourism account to, to dip into. So that's, those are kind of, that's, like I said, I know it's last minute to, to bring that up, but it just popped into my mind. So.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to turn now to Vice Mayor.
All right. So I got a couple of questions. So Mara, you mentioned, like there would, there would be a master plan that this money would be allocated to. I think that master plan should have came first before we propose this on a ballot. I mean, I understand the idea and I know we need to find a way to generate revenue for these projects. Right? We need to focus on the operational necessities. And, you know, I, I brought this up last meeting. I think, you know, there is, there are other ways, you know, such as the just potential discussion of annexation. You know, the park impact fees that, you know, we, we, we moved forward this last summer, I think. Public safety impact fees we're talking about next. You know, looking, looking at, you know, other taxing districts that we sit on boards on. You know, I just, you know, ultimately the people are going to decide this. But this seems, i- i- it's, there's, there's a lot of what ifs to move this forward. And I just don't, I just don't know if I can do that right this moment. However, I, I, I do want to know what, so what was the thought process? And I guess what's the cost? So what's the cost of doing this in, in March, right? I think it was March for the presidential primary, right? I think, you know, this would go on to that ballot. And then there's a presidential election later this year that could also potentially go on that ballot. No. Okay. So that, that.
So one of the things that we discussed with the SOE early on is the fact that there's only, the window that we had for, to put a ballot question on the, on the ballot would be the March election this next year, or we'd have to wait to the following election in 2025. She would not allow us because, based on the, the amount of information on the ballot, they don't allow ballot questions from, from municipalities.
Okay.
When we checked that, you know, that, that was discussion that we had with her. We did get it and kind of, we got emailed from her alluding to that.
Okay. So that's the reasoning here. Okay. I just, you know, it just feels rushed. Sure, there's a rhyme and reason. So thanks for explaining that. These other questions might, might be silly, but I'm not a bond expert. So is the, the, the term 30 years, are they typically always 30 years? Is there 15 year options that maybe we could look at a lower rate? So then that way, you know, maybe we do have a little bit more control on how this money's spent, right? If we're going to move this forward. Because one thing that I heard earlier in public comment was this should not be an injection, you know, for our operating budget. You know, these are for long term, these are for long term projects. And, you know, it, it's almost, and, and this would go to my next question is, is there a way to legally bind the use of these funds for certain projects? To where, you know, when we're, when we're gone, you know, when, and that's why I brought up the master plan in a later time is I think, and, and I don't, you know, and just chime in wherever I'm speaking online. But I think that if we could maybe look at a shorter term, you know, I mean, I don't know what the difference is would be with the interest rate and then somehow legally bind that referendum to a long term project of something that this commission, you know, could, that this commission's strategic vision is in line with, right? And does that look like, you know, does, does that look like we're doing this now? Do we take some time and revisit this, you know? And do we get that community input on what these long term projects are going to be? Because I, I, I think the big thing is, is, you know, we're, we're going to ask our residents to vote on this. And it's a, it's a cost to vote on, to, to hold this, right? And if it doesn't, if it doesn't pass, then, you know, it doesn't pass. But then that was funds, you know, the intention was good, but, you know, it was funds for, I don't want to say nothing, but, you know, something didn't get done. And so I, I would be more comfortable if there was a legally, hit the button. It's going down the elevator. I, I would be more comfortable if there was a way to legally bind this and then propose that to the community. Because then I think, you know, in, in the honor of transparency, you know, the voter is going to look at this and say, all right, hey, here's, here, here's our strategic vision in a nutshell, when it, when it comes to infrastructure and public safety and CIP. Here's what we're thinking, you know, ladies and gentlemen. And then, and then that way there's, they know those long term projects. And they know when year five or 10 comes back, they're like, yeah, I see this bill, you know, and year 12, yeah, that, you know, that, that was great or fire station three looks good, you know, or, or this project's awesome. You know, or, you know, I see my kids growing up at this park. You know, like I, it needs to be memorable, not just, and this is not a dig, it no means. I'm just thinking from the lens of a, of a voter, you know, and, and, and long term. You know, it, it's, it's got to be memorable and it can't just be, hey, we're going to spend this money. And, you know, for this line item, this line item, this line item. I just think as a voter, you know, if I know what my dollars are specifically going towards, like I think I'd be more, because we know, right? And like city staff knows and like people who pay attention might know and do their due diligence. But there's, I don't know, like 97%, 98% of the population, that's just, they're just going to see this as an extra tax, you know, or an, an increase. And then when a simple service and things happen, we're not perfect. Like trash doesn't get picked up or a call isn't done. It's like, I'm paying this more tax, you know, I mean, and, and, you know, like my simple services aren't being met. You know, as a, as a voter, you know, I'm going to say, well, why am I paying this? So I, I think, I think having this more specific and legally binding to the projects that this commission wants would be something that I could support and allow the, the voters to move forward. You know, and again, we could look at what that amount is, what the term's going to be, 30 year versus 15 year. And, you know, because that, essentially the 30 year could be the same as the 15 year if we went lower on the amount. But I just, there needs to be vision and something binding for this, for me to move it forward is kind of where I'm at.
Did want to speak to the terms. So there is an option to do a 30 year term or a 20 year term. Reducing the, the term does reduce the interest rate, but it does increase the cost to the resident. So that's the other part of that. So it, it's really how you want that to show up for the resident as well. So, you know, a 30 year for 75 million might cost them 140, but a 20 year may cost them 160 just because they're paying it off sooner.
And it depends on the amount of the bond. Because if you do a $100 million bond for 30 years, you know, you do a $50 million bond for 15 years, maybe a little bit of a difference, but you're going to be closer. So, you know, the, the question is how much do we really want to bond out? And, you know, like, I, I just think there's a lot, I, I think there's a lot more that we need to do for this. And again, I don't, this can't be an injection into the budget. um, I don't, this can't be an injection into the budget, because then that show, then what happens ten, fifteen years down the road? You know what I mean? Not not that we're doing a bad job with the budget. Um, you know, the other thing is too, is you know, for me, if to even move forward, I'm, I'm, I would want to recommend go and keep going down on the mileage rate. You know, looking right back at the fire assessment. I'm not going to put forward a bond and then just blow our coffers. I want the residents to see a return if we're grabbing it elsewhere. And um, you know, that's, that's, that's where I'm at. Um, some of these projects are very important. Commissioner Kelly brought up the uh the tourism tax. I think that's a pretty good idea. You know, I think, I think it's like chicken, what comes first, the chicken or the egg? You know, I mean, or how many people are coming to void, and I think we're getting better, but I think this could help fund projects that will draw that that tourism, right? And so, you know, you establish that, and then um, you know, you come up with a plan to where the, you know, this bond's over with, we can utilize that, but, you know, I I I I think there's a lot of moving parts to this. And um yeah, I just, my, my biggest thing is just making sure it's legally bonded with specific projects, and then I think it could be more palatable.
Can I ask a question? Yeah, the the bond covenants and the the, when you let the bond, that will be specific to the projects.
That's what I was going to say, is the bond documents would be legally binding and require specific use of the funds.
Now, that wouldn't be as part of the referendum vote, but that's when we do go to execute on the bond itself, that's where the restrictions would come in to where it would would control what future commissions could and couldn't do with the money.
So, I mean, but I mean, essentially, they could probably amend that or change that, right?
Not the bond documents. That was the answer I was looking for.
Okay.
The bond documents would be a.
Right. They're legally binding as is, that you would have to keep the money spent as it's determined in the bond.
And how specific is that? Is it category? Is it area? Is it, these are my specific projects? It's a park, it's this amount, it's.
I think, I think we can make it as restrictive as you'd like, but again, things change, so you don't want to tie your hands completely.
Depends on us.
Correct, correct. And that would be a part that would come back to you guys when we go to execute on the bond. That stuff would come back to you as a part of that if it was voted on by the voters, uh, voted up by the voters.
Okay.
And and just one other thing I I mentioned that we do have, we've already gotten quotes from consultants, you know, that we have a pretty tight timeline to make March nineteenth. So we're already, we've been lining up things to get executed that way, depending on what the outcome of tonight's meeting is, and then obviously bringing, we still have to bring back the ballot language to you. You have to actually vote on that. It's a resolution for that ballot language for both ballot questions. Um, so there'll be some more steps that come back to you as a part of this, and I think we'll even have an opportunity at that point. Um, just because if you voted forward to bring back it tonight, doesn't mean you're voting for that ballot language today. We're going to bring back the ballot language with the specifics, but we do want to at least lock down the number, the dollar amounts, and then that you support this, you know, the the each question, whether one, infrastructure, or do we just go with public safety? Or do we go with both questions? I think that's where that we're looking for the consensus from the commission, and then we can bring this back to you on the twenty first or December fifth, as soon as we can get this through legal and bond council.
All right. Thank you. Vice Mayor, did you have any additional questions? Otherwise, I'll proceed to, but.
Yes. Um, so you mentioned that there is exemptions for seniors on this?
I believe it's the same exemptions for the tax bill, so I do, there.
It's the same as Ad Valerum, disabled veterans, seniors. Okay. What what about the, what the mayor brought up like a year ago, the additional exemption for the, I think it was like one? Yes.
This was the low income seat, so there was two separate.
Yep.
But that's on the tax bill as well.
Okay, so they're, they would be eligible for, so they could be exempted from this.
And I don't know, we'd have to talk to bond counsel, but there may be additional exemptions that you could add to the bond as part of building the bond, and, you know, you guys are kind of the determining factor in that regard. So there's a possibility, I mean, kind of similar to how we did with the fire assessment, um, that we could add additional exemptions. I'm not positive, but we could talk to bond counsel for sure.
Um, yeah, so those, those are all my questions, uh, comments for now.
So Vice Mayor, just so I understand your position, what what exactly is, is it you're, you're in favor, but with these restrictions, or you're not in favor until such time as, how would you describe your position?
Oh, man, you know, I just, I just, I I want to say, let's move forward, I do. But I I just need, I need, like, I can't, I can't, so when do the bond documents come? They come?
So it would be after the vote.
After the vote, right? So. Come back, new mayor.
So basically, Vice Mayor, it sounds like if that's the case, i- if you campaign or or just, you know, communicate with your residents, you can't really tell them it's only used for this, right? Or, because those decisions won't be made until after when the documents arrive, and then we, do I understand that correctly?
It's my understanding, and Casey, I, you've been a little more involved, but that when we work with the contractor for marketing this, we'll have to decide kind of what the residents are voting on and building that into the referendum. So the residents are going to make that decision and saying, yes, I'm voting on this funding for X, Y, and Z, and then that's what comes back to the commission through the bond documents.
Correct. We we would bring some specific projects for to the residents in order to give them uh to gain their support for their vote. So um, you know, moving forward, those would be some specific projects that you would, that they would see, because that's how we would educate them on, uh, you know, gaining their vote for this uh, for this project.
Now, that wouldn't be a part of the ballot language. That would be more of the marketing of the of the ballot language. But that's going to be, that's when we engage the consultant, that'd be where we bring back. So you'll have talking points that this bond is going to be for this and this. Um, the exact language, exactly, the restrictions won't come until you get the bond, like you're likely mentioned before, the actual bond documents, but that'll be worked in.
So earlier, you mentioned, Andrew, that there there's multiple steps to this, and we're not even deciding on the actual referendum on the ballot until.
But we would be bringing back that pretty quickly to you. Probably the latest would be December fifth. Because we have to have enough time to get it to the SOE by the nineteenth. And, you know, ultimately, it's it's up to you guys to decide. I mean, if this timeframe doesn't work, our next shot at this is going to be the March twenty twenty five election.
Right. Yeah, I just.
It's it's a tough decision. I I, we all get it. It's not, it's not an easy decision.
Don't like, I I just, I don't, I I feel like there's a way to do this to where we can tie this to major projects, and it's not just coming up as a infrastructure and public safety bond. You know, whether it's fifteen years, thirty years, you know, and it's, hey, it's an infrastructure for for this and this, you know, and I, there's just too many what ifs, because I don't, I don't want a decision that I made that people are going to be burdened with fifteen, thirty years, and then I'm not here, you know, and I can't get loud and try to fix things if if another commission decides to do something else with the money. You know, I'm the one that brought that forward, and I just don't, I don't know if I can make that decision tonight.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm going to turn now to Commissioner Cruz.
Um. Thank you for your presentation. Um, I do have a few questions. Can we go back to the slide where we're talking about infrastructure? And what we want to do with that specifically? Okay, so I see road resurfacing where? City beautification, how? Street lights, where? Waterfront improvements? Traffic calming, what does that mean? And then neighborhood drainage improvements? Where would that be and what does that mean? So um, that's the beginning of of kind of what goes through my mind as I think about this. Um, you know, I do appreciate all the time that staff has spent in doing this research. Um, I do want some questions for clarification. I don't know if it would be City Manager or Andrew. Um, how did we get here? To, you know, be requesting a a ballot for thirty years to be paid by our residents? Was this something that, because this is not, as far as my knowledge goes, it is not something that was requested by the commission. So can you walk us through the process of how we got here today?
I know this started before I took the uh DIA, so I know this this started with the uh, the park survey, correct, Casey?
Right, but the the recommendation from the Parks System Master Plan was, uh, they gave us a list of projects uh that would, again, enhance and expand uh according to the the uh projected growth of the city. Uh, so there was a recommendation for certain part projects uh in that plan. Uh, and the recommendation to fund those projects was a, was a a parks bond. Uh, so again, uh, that's kind of how we have come to this, especially for the park projects. Uh, the infrastructure, obviously, we've had some conversations, we've done some research uh to find that we can uh draft ballot language that can include infrastructure projects as well. And again, we've taken some uh, some of the information that we've heard from commission as far as some of the projects uh that would help uh to uh, you know, move the city forth, you know, with, you know, road servicing. Again, these are general projects, just kind of give you an idea of projects that can be included in this referendum. Uh, again, we will come back with more specific projects with locations of specific roads, specific street light, um, streets that could be uh improved. So again, we just kind of wanted to give you an idea in order to gain your support for this.
Thank you, Casey. Um, but so just to make sure I'm understanding correctly, how we got here was the Park Master Plan, is that correct? Okay. I hate to say it, but I don't trust the Park Master Plan. I've said it before. I'll say it again. Um, one of the things that called my attention was the lack of attention to detail, specifically with Leisureville saying that we needed to spend two million dollars in that lot where the community, and it's this no secret, I mean, I think everyone at City Hall probably knows that people in the neighborhood don't want anything there. They don't, you know, they want to feel safe. They don't really want anything that attracts more individuals to the area. And, you know, the Parks Master Plan put in two million dollars for that purpose, then I saw, you know, twelve and a half million dollars to be um spent potentially, you know, with a with a combination of our partnership with Congress Middle School, which, you know, it might benefit some, but it might not benefit, you know, all of my constituents. And um, okay, but thank you for for, you know, explaining that. I I definitely do appreciate it. Um, the next question I have is, when was the last time that the city of Boyden Beach did a general obligation bond? I would have to look.
I do remember when we did the ballot language, uh, I believe there was a ballot done for expansion of the library.
That failed.
Which actually failed. And then the commission went ahead and issued ba- uh, a loan on that project.
Circumvented what the people had wanted, and the commission took it upon themselves to issue that bond.
Well, not what the people wanted, because they voted no on it, right?
They did the opposite of what the people wanted.
Yeah. So we don't know when the last general obligation bond was taken by the city. Okay.
I I don't.
These are like basic, like, very, very basic things that I would think that we might want to have. Um, when we're discussing a thirty year bond with, you know, I I thought that that would be relevant, like, you know, historically, like, when did we do this before? How many times have we done it in the a hundred years of our city? And that's really, honestly, that's the reason why I wanted to know, because I wanted to see, like, are with the exception, or is this, you know, nor- normal practice in um, in local government or within our city specifically? Like, how have we been spending money? How have we been able to fund parks? And how have we been able to fund public safety in the past a hundred years? And somehow, now, where we have about, let's say, twenty percent more money in our budget, we're having issues funding those things. So with with regard to capital improvements, I'm all for it. It's something that we need, it's necessary. Um, but I I do so, you know what, before I make a conclusion, because we could go either way, um, I have a few more questions. City Manager, we stated earlier in the meeting that thirteen D, um, we talked about a presentation of a full inventory or a current state of our infrastructure by um, the utilities department, right, to review our existing utility infrastructure, development of risk matrix and prioritization of repairs and or replacement projects. It was stated earlier in this meeting that it would take how longly, between six months to a year?
Correct, to give that complete assessment of, obviously, the assessment of those assets and the condition of them.
So I question, do we even know what we're going to spend this money on? Because we're saying we want to use it, first of all, it was parks. The only reason why we added infrastructure is because I kind of drilled that down at the last meeting, but it really feels like an afterthought. It doesn't appear that it's something that legitimately wants to be used for that, because the purpose, as I was seeking to understand, I don't want to assume, was the purpose for this entire bond was really the Parks Master Plan, which I I question some of it, not the entirety of it. Um, so so that is something that I, if we're talking about taking out an infrastructure bond, which I would support, because I think we need infrastructure in the city, wouldn't common sense tell us that we would need to know where our current state of our infrastructure is? Where are we with our inventory? So the question is, if we don't know where we're going, how do we know when we get there? And that's a big question that I have. You know, if we, if it's going to take us between six months to a year to understand where we are in regard to our infrastructure inventory for utilities and underground pipes and all these things, how do we know how much money we need? What if we actually need more than that? And then we're here taking out a thirty year bond on something that we actually probably need a lot more money for, to actually sustain the city as we're growing and as we're, you know, getting more traffic and as we're building different buildings, you know, it's it's something that I wonder, you know, how do we know where we're going if we don't have an infrastructure plan or or a foundation? Like, anytime we do anything in life, in government, we need to have a solid foundation. And I don't believe that related to infrastructure, I don't think we have a solid foundation of understanding. We were just talking today how we don't even have the scope of work for a consultant to do. It's something that we're working on. We're currently working on the scope of work. During the agenda review, I know Andrew, Dan, and um, I think Adam Temple, you guys were there. And we had a, almost a two hour conversation with questions about this. And um, I think I asked a lot of questions, but I think that our back and forth dialogue kind of ended up being inventory. Where are we with inventory? How long would it take for the city of Boyden Beach to find out how many of our underground pipes are not only deteriorating, but are in, like, dire need of immediate action? How many of, how many of those maybe are going to take another ten, fifteen years to need repair and or replacement? So I'm not against a bond issue. What I am against is being unprepared for war in a theoretical sense, is like, we're going to tell our residents, many of my constituents are senior citizens. Not all of them are on fixed incomes, many of them are. So yes, the exemption might alleviate some of my constituents' um pocketbooks, but it won't alleviate all of them. And we even have people that are currently working that are having a tough time. Um, I'm not going to get into the details of car insurance and house insurance and the cost of everything increasing, but you know, it's it's becoming very much unaffordable for people to live. And if we're going to do this, which I would be okay with doing at some point, I would feel comfortable with speaking to my constituents with at least an educated inventory of, this is where we are with infrastructure, this is how much it's going to cost, this is why I need so and so X amount of millions of dollars to be able to repair, replace, or whatnot for those underground pipes. And so one more thing that I think we talked about during the meeting is would this bond even? cover replacement or repair of underground utility infrastructure or would it not?
Yeah, I think contemplated this will not include water and sewer. It includes drainage. It includes all the others. It just won't include water. So we currently have a debt service already for water and sewer, which the utility department has.
And can you, just because I'm not aware of this, can you educate me a little bit on on how much that is, how that works and just briefly, maybe like two minutes?
On the debt service for utilities, you mean? So I think it's forty million dollars. Um, I could send it to you. I don't remember when it's paid off. Um, I know we also have a public service tax bond um that's paid off in twenty twenty seven. Um, it does free up some funding for capital. One of the things I did want to mention is, you know, going back to nineteen ninety six, um, I was looking at our bonds and we've kind of refunded them and added to them and whatnot up until the surtax funding came into play. That's how we were funding our capital projects is through bonds and not through GO bonds. It was bonds, but this would actually go to the taxpayers to determine their support there.
Thank you so much. Um, so I mean, I want to support this. I really want to support it because I understand that we have needs. But I wouldn't feel good about supporting it if I don't have an inventory of what we're working with, where we are at, you know. How long is it going to take to, you know, as as mentioned previously or earlier today, it's, you know, in order to spend the money, the funding source has to last the length of the loan or whatnot. So I just, I want to support something and I would like to um find ways to maybe make this happen at some point. I just don't know that we are ready for that today. Um, because there are still so many questions in the air. And how can I go? One more thing and the reason, the other reason why I asked, you know, when did this start? It's because, you know, it just came to us, what, like last commission meeting? That we're doing um a referendum and, you know, I didn't, I didn't fully know that this was happening like way before that. Um, so one thing that I personally would like to do is I would like to do a town hall, actually several town halls at different neighborhoods within my district to kind of gauge, you know, neighborhood support and kind of let people know what the plan is, what we're planning to do with the funding. Um, and I tried to schedule that, but I was supposed to have one on the eleventh, but that's not going to be possible anymore. So, you know, how could I say yes to a a referendum when I haven't yet had the ability to talk to my constituents? And it, you know, it feels like the process is just a little bit rushed with regard to having, like, I feel the duty to communicate with my constituents. And if I don't, I am going to feel bad. I'm I'm going to feel like I'm not doing what I'm supposed to do. So if I don't have a town hall and I don't have the ability to to communicate within the timeframe, um, I'm not able to, at least here. They might love it. They might not. I I don't want to assume either way. I just would like to have that opportunity to talk to my constituents. And it's difficult to get that many people in a room, you know, and schedule all that. So that's kind of my my biggest concern. It's like I'm I'm open to supporting something. But at the same time, I don't want to support it without having the opportunity or fulfilling the duty to to talk to my constituents and and see what they think about it and and educate them on, you know, where we are with the funding and how this could benefit them. And obviously, you know, if I were to support an amount, it would be, it would be a lower amount. It would be something that isn't too detrimental on the pockets of the people that live in the city.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Cruz, for your thoughts. Um, hearing from everyone, listen, I, you know, I I looked at my clock at the beginning of this conversation. It was nine thirty. And the time is now ten thirty five. And after hearing everyone, I I I hear no clear consensus on the direction. What I am hearing is not enough information. I want to take this to the public. There's still so many questions. Uh, this is a wish list. So it is not clear to me that we're moving forward. If anything, it's clear to me that we're not moving forward tonight. Uh, we may have to do a follow up conversation. I know that there is a deadline. And so let me just quickly address one of the things you said, Commissioner Cruz, which is if, you know, and I I support it, you know, you want to be able to go to town halls even before you, I think that's what you were suggesting, even before you make a decision to put it in the ballot or not. Uh, from, if we could quickly go to the original, the first slide was it or the second slide? I think the deadline was December nineteen, so there really isn't a lot of time for that. Is it possible? I I I mean, it's possible for you to organize, but you're right. It's difficult to organize uh that many people. And maybe you get only one town hall. Uh, so I don't know what to tell you, except what's clear is we're not going, we're not making a decision tonight, right? It's only, it's already been an hour's worth of conversation. So I say um, we end this discussion because we 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 don't need to keep another hour here. We still have a few more agenda items. Okay? Is that all right with everybody? Okay, no clear majority, no clear consensus. So we're going to move forward. All right. Thank you so much to staff. I will encourage my colleagues, please, um, and and staff, please communicate uh and try to answer as many of these questions in private. Uh, so we come uh with with fewer questions. And these are very good questions. I have the same concerns. I absolutely do. Commissioner Kelly, uh, we're about to move on, but you'll be the last.
Well, I just, I want to know what then the next plan is because we're, we talked about this the last meeting. We were all going to talk to our residents. We were all gonna, you know, get opinions so that we were able to come back today and kind of make, you know, somewhat of a decision. And so now and I understand, I know I'm in the same boat as everyone else where, you know, we have um, you know, a big job and big decisions to make, but what is the plan then moving forward? What do, what are we doing? Because now you're saying that we're we're going to stop having this discussion. And so then, so then what's the plan? What are, what are we doing? So, so, I mean, we know that we're not going to, this bond is not going to be able to answer every, it's not going to be able to complete everything on our wish list and or everything on anyone else's wish list or even any other project that we can imagine in the next five, ten, fifteen years. We know that. There's no way we would be asking for way more than what we're asking for if we think we're going to be able to do every single thing that's on the the, you know, every department's wish list. Um, or even what we, you know, so I just, I don't want to just walk away and and not have some sort of a plan as far as is what we're doing because it is important. It's important um for the city to move. We have to think we're not going to get surtax money. That's ending. We're, we have a city that we have to be able to fund and run. So what are we doing? What is the, what is the plan? I mean, that's, you know, a- and you know, we're looking at different options as far as funding options. We have a huge list of things that need to happen. We have a list of things we don't even know yet that are going to have to happen. And yet we're talking about potentially reducing the amount that we're going to go out for bond. Um, because um, it's a lo- you know, it's a lot of money. Um, but the list keeps growing as we move on and move forward. So I just, I don't want to leave this meeting without some sort of a plan and a consensus from the board as far as how we're moving this forward.
Listen, I I think that's a fair question and let me try to address it now. My original thought is, one, after this meeting, I'm going to connect with staff to make sure that you guys have all of your, as much as humanly possible, have your questions answered offline one on one. That's number one. Number two, I was going to propose to staff and I I we, now you know, um, that I want to have at least one more go, one more, perhaps a workshop. I think a workshop would be sufficient to give direction. Sometime between now and that deadline. Now, I don't even want to, I didn't really want to say it until such time that I have conferred with staff and they have confer- confirmed with me that they have done their best to answer your questions. Because if that doesn't even happen, there's no point in having another conversation about this because then nothing changes. So I think if there's, if you're looking for a plan, the plan is I'm going to ask staff to meet with all of you separately and then I'm going to call for a workshop. And then in that workshop, that'll be our final attempt because quite frankly, we won't make it in the deadline if it doesn't happen in that workshop.
Right.
Right? So that is my recommendation to my colleagues, one on one meetings with staff followed by a potential workshop.
Yeah, I I heard there was going to be a town hall December second because there was going to be one on the eleventh, but they but they're not, they can't have me on that one because they're dealing with some stuff.
Sorry, what town hall?
No, well, one of my concerns was I I need to.
Oh, for that you want to set up? Yeah. Um, I, if you haven't noticed, I haven't actually said my position, but I always don't want to say it because it's it's getting, it's ten forty one. Um, we'll just come back. I can, I have, I can wait. All right, Commissioner, is that all right?
Fine, I just wanted to make sure we had a plan that was and and sorry to put you on the spot to make you have a plan, but at least now we all know the plan, so.
All right. Thank you so much, everyone. Um, we're going to move on. Thank you to staff for all of your hard work and patience. We're going to move on to. But, you know, let me also say, listen, this is a big decision, so I know it took an hour. But what is an hour to a hundred million dollars potentially? Um, new business, eleven A, Commissioner Hay, yes.
Um, I I hear what all is being said, but I will say this, that this workshop that you plan on having.
It's a recommendation, Commissioner.
Recommendation? I won't be there probably, okay?
Okay.
Now, if you want to do it remotely, that's fine with me, but uh.
Yeah.
I I.
As long as we have in person, physical quorum, we can have you remotely.
Okay.
If needed. But I think, you know, you made your position very clear tonight.
Yeah.
So I just need to get enough majority consensus, right?
Okay.
Yeah. And I will speak to staff about my position and I will share that with all of you next meeting. Now it is ten forty three. And um, I know there are people here that have been waiting patiently. I mean, just ask my colleagues, do you want to power through and continue? Or table these items and proceed to the next and move them to the next meeting? Uh, it is your collective decision.
Speed please.
Do you want to proceed?
Yes.
Okay, that's one.
Um, I I I'm okay to maybe table these items. The only thing is, I just want to, before I show support on that, I'm going to check with Commissioner Kelly, so I know she has the item on the fleet management today and that she wants to hear that on support. I just don't know if you want to wait on that or, you know, I mean, because that's.
Can I, can I ask staff, item eleven A, is that time sensitive? Is that legal? Is that?
Is time sensitive. Additionally, um, with regard to the proposed ordinance, we'd have to republish that. Um, so those are are two items that, and we we do have the um appellate and then our rebuttal, they are here.
I understand. Yep. I, like I said, they have been waiting patiently.
We have um allocated fifteen minutes to each. We could discuss um shortening the time.
Are you doing fifteen minutes?
To each? Can we do eight to ten minutes in each?
I'm okay to continue if we're gonna decrease the time.
No more than ten. Okay. Um, Commissioner Cruz and Kelly, I'm sorry, Kelly, it's approaching love. Hey, and Kelly, are you okay with moving forward and powering through this tonight?
Yeah, we can put a time limit on it.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, my thought is if we can do eleven A um and table the other two, I would be amenable to that because I think that, I don't, I don't think anyone for twelve A is from, we can easily.
First reading.
It's only first reading. We can easily reset that. And then my fleet thing, that's fine. I can, I've talked to staff too about it, so. But if we can power through eleven A and get that done.
We'll take care of eleven A and then you're saying eleven B and twelve A we can table. A- any objections to that proposal?
With the amount of time that we've been talking, we could.
No, it just, we'd have to re- repost.
But we already paid to, but we paid to post.
Go ahead on.
That's fine. We're going to proceed with item eleven A and then we will table the remaining items, okay? Um, so I'm going to turn to the city clerk to formally announce the item, after which uh the commission will make uh some disclosures. City clerk.
I'll go ahead. Proposed ordinance number twenty three dash zero two two, first read, oh, I'm sorry, wrong thing. My bad. This is an administrative appeal relating to the Woolbright Place um plan unit development, the Cove determination relating to the administrative appeal.
All right, thank you. And counsel, you would like for us to follow this new guideline for making ex parte declarations and disclosures. Does does everybody have a copy of this? Okay, so from my understanding, I can go first. As to this matter, I have not had any ex parte communications with uh this group, received any written communications, not to my knowledge, conducted an investigation, nor have I made a site visit, nor have I received expert opinions. Okay.
I requested these disclosures.
Yes, I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record. Okay, thank you so much. Let's go around the dais, Commissioner Cruz.
I have not had ex parte communications, nor have I received re- written communications, nor have I conducted an investigation, nor had I made a site visit, nor have I received expert opinions, and I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
As to this matter, I have not had ex parte communications, received written communications, conducted investigation, made a site visit or received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record. One, one question to that, Shauna.
Yes.
Wh- when it says expert opinions and communications, are we talking about city staff?
No.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Was that the conclusion? All right, Commissioner Hay.
I have not had big ex parte communication or received written communication, no. Conducted an investigation, no. Made a site visit, no. Received expert opinion, no. I request that these disclosures and all written communication be made part of the record.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly.
As to this matter, I have not had ex parte communications, received written communications, conducted an investigation, made a site visit or received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you so much, everyone. I'm going to turn now to the city clerk for the swearing in of any witnesses.
If you're here to speak on this matter, please raise your right hand.
Right hand.
And then raise your right hand. Do you swear to swear or affirm that the evidence that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
All right, so now we're going to turn to uh the appellant, uh your presentation. We're going to allow no more than ten minutes. After the appellant, we're going to hear staff and then we'll hear a rebuttal from the appellant, after which the commission will deliberate. Okay, so let's begin with you.
If you'd like to reserve time for rebuttal, please just let us know. And did you have any documents to submit? Because we didn't receive any in advance.
Um, I do have one ordinance that I'd like to introduce into the record and also a July eighteenth, two thousand twenty three agenda item request, a May twenty third, two thousand twenty three staff report, staff July eighteenth, twenty twenty three short term rental presentation and application form all related to ordinance twenty three dash zero.
I like, we'll, we'll take those, but just for the record, none of this has been reviewed by any of the city commission because these were not submitted as requested by Friday.
Uh, for the record, these are all public documents that the county, that the commissioners have all reviewed and they're all part of the ordinance. They're all backup. They're part of your agenda item in July of twenty twenty three.
Uh, David tells this outside council, and I'm just going to reserve objection to the introduction of any uh additional documentation that wasn't previously made part of the record as part of the agenda. I I do know that staff had requested that any documents be submitted by the Friday prior to the meeting and there were none submitted. So I'll just reserve that objection. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, to my knowledge, I I was not made aware of any of these documents. This is my first time hearing about these. But I'll leave my comments there, okay? But I'll leave my comments there, okay?
Thank you.
All right, let's continue, please, with your presentation.
It's at the time clock, please.
Yes, I'm about to do that.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners Ian Demello from the law firm Schubin and Bass, 525 Okeechobee Boulevard in West Palm Beach. On behalf of the property owner, SCG Atlantis Boynton 1 LLC, the owner of the residential rental community known as the Cove of Boynton Beach. Respectfully requesting that the commission overturn the staff's determination that short-term rentals are prohibited on the property. Not only is staff's determination preempted by the Florida legislature, because the city does not have a clear and unambiguous pre-2011 short-term rental prohibition, and it cannot regulate the duration of dwelling unit, dwelling unit rentals. Staff also applied the rotten law. Specifically, we maintain that the determination was issued without the benefit of ordinance 23-012, which is the ordinance I just submitted into the record. It was adopted by this commission in July of this year and expressly permits dwelling units to be used as short-term rentals. Specifically, it sets forth the standards applicable to an application for short-term rentals. It defines short-term rentals. It sets forth the approval requirements. It sets forth the technical and operational requirements and the penalties for violations. Near the ordinance nor the applications prohibit short-term rentals in a PUD zoning district or anywhere else in the city. The city's determination failed to apply any of these applicable standards. Instead, the determination attempts to apply a new interpretation of the definition of dwelling contained in the city's land development regulations to determine that the short-term rentals are prohibited. However, this interpretation conflicts with the short-term rental ordinance definition. And I'll summarize it, but the, the word dwelling unit is included in the definition. A short-term rental, also called a vacation rental, in a public lodging establishment in Florida statutes is any unit or group of units in a condominium or co-op, cooperative, or any individually or collectively owned, single-family, two-family, three-family, or four-family, and I'll highlight the next word, dwelling unit, or a structure that is advertised or rented to transient occupants more than three times in a calendar year for periods of less than 30 days or one calendar month. Now, I want to make one point very clear here because it's, it's very important from a legal standpoint. The short-term rental ordinance has a conflict provision. And it confirms that short-term rental definition, the short-term rental definition in your ordinance, rather than the city's interpretation of the definition of dwelling must be applied. It states if any conflict exists between the requirements in this section and other sections in this article or other articles and chapters of the land development regulations, the requirements of this article shall prevail. Again, this is your short-term rental ordinance that you approved in July. So as a result, the short-term rental ordinance definition applies, not the city's interpretation of dwelling. In addition, I just taking this to its logical conclusion, if, if the, if any zoning district that contains dwelling units prohibits short-term rentals, then it really renders your short-term rental ordinance meaningless. So just in summary, the Cove of Boynton Beach is a gated apartment complex where dwelling units are permitted. Instead of 30 days or longer, the owner would like to rent a small number of units for less than 30 days. They would like to do so in full compliance with the city's short-term rental ordinance and all the regulations that you so carefully thought of and put in place in your short-term rental ordinance. So we ask that the commission reverse the staff's determination and allow them proceed with the licensing under your code. We believe that doing so will avoid costly litigation while also providing a service to Boynton residents and visitors coming to the city of Boynton. Thank you.
Thank you. That was, uh, okay.
I went as fast as I could.
Uh, that was under four minutes. Um, I'm going to continue now to, of course, the city.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Once again, David Tolstas outside counsel for the city. Uh, before I begin, I would just like to make sure that I introduce into the record the entire file from your development department for, uh, ZVCL number 23, uh, several, like five zeros, 44, the agenda cover memo, our firm's October 31st, 2023 memo. Uh, the applicable ordinances from the city of Boynton Beach, ordinance 89-18, 89-38, 98-26, as well as a stipulation settlement agreement between the city and the property owner and any applicable land development code provisions related to this matter. Now, I will say that having just, you know, received these documents, I will, uh, continue my objection to the consideration of those items because they weren't made part of the record prior to this evening. In addition, I will say that when the original request came in from the property owner, I believe that request was July 3rd, uh, 2023, which was before any short-term rental ordinance was adopted. So if they at any time thought that they were entitled to a different type of interpretation based upon the ordinance that was adopted on, in July after their original request, they certainly could have submitted another one, but they failed to do so. So I would say that they waived any, any right to object, uh, to the interpretation based upon the short-term rental ordinance. But notwithstanding all that, I will go back to our cover memo and the agenda memo as well, uh, which is before you this evening and just identify the fact that, you know, the, this property is the subject of a specific PUD ordinance that was adopted, uh, by the city in 1989, as well as a stipulation settlement agreement which was entered into between the parties back then. And specifically, uh, as provided for in that ordinance, uh, the, the reference to, uh, dwelling unit or dwelling, uh, as defined in the city code only relates to, uh, a building or portion thereof used exclusively for residential occupancy or habitation, but excluding hotels and motels, group homes, boats, recreation vehicles, tents, and the like. Uh, there's nothing in the city's existing definition, which includes anything related to short-term rentals, temporary lodging, or any type of transient guests. Uh, these ordinances were adopted prior to 2011. Uh, 2011 is important because that's the statutory provision that says that after that point in time, the state's statute preempted the city's right to regulate duration of short-term rentals. Uh, the city went ahead and adopted its ordinance in 2023. We're not regulating duration, but what we're saying here today is whatever was in effect when this property owner agreed or the prior property owner agreed to, uh, limit the use on that property is still applicable today and is not preempted by the state. Uh, so therefore, based upon that, uh, staff was correct in their interpretation. Um, and as stated in my, in the memo and all the documentation previously provided to you, uh, the commission should affirm staff's interpretation. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to turn now to the appellant for rebuttal for five minutes maximum. All right, begin when you're ready, sir.
Thank you. Just, um, would like to note as a matter of course, that the determination was issued in August 2023. So staff had the full ability to rely on the new ordinance that this commission passed in approving short-term rentals within the city and providing a licensing process for applicants like my client who bought property and they want to go ahead and provide the service and it's really about the duration of nights that they're renting. Instead of 30 days or more, it's 30 days or less. Um, initially, there's nothing in the PUD or the settlement agreement that restricts short-term rentals. The only thing that's contained within the PUD and the settlement agreement, it just sits dwelling units. There's a certain amount of dwelling units per acre that they committed to and are restricted to within the PUD. Now, if you go to the definition of dwelling unit, which is what we're talking about here because that's what they use in the PUD and the settlement agreement. Dwelling unit is defined as a residential unit comprised of one or more habitable rooms connected together, providing complete independent living facilities for a single family in which includes provisions for living, cooking, eating, sleeping, and sanitation. That's what these units are. They're dwelling units, they're residential units. In addition, also under the city's code, the res, uh, def, the definition of residential is zoning district includes PUD, Planned Unit Development. Again, these are residential units, they're dwelling units. This commission set forth a licensing process that sets forth that dwelling units can be used as short-term rentals. Again, my client is simply asking to be allowed to go through the process, apply for the short-term license, for short-term rentals, and comply with all the regulations that you passed in July. Thank you.
Thank you. We have heard from the appellant, staff response, appellate rebuttal. Now it is time for the commission to deliberate. Uh, this is quasi-judicial based on competent substantial evidence. Let me turn to my colleagues for their, uh, comments, thoughts, questions, and, uh, any deliberations amongst each other. Commissioner Kelly, let's begin with you and we'll go around the days.
When you you're talking about, um, an amount, a small number of units, what, what are you, what are you talking about? I mean, as far as the amount that you're, that you're thinking, um, your client would want to convert to short-term rentals?
I was not provided a specific number, but I can check my notes and see if I can figure that out.
I mean, small number of units is.
If I might, I, I believe that Ms. Radigan might have some information relevant to that.
Yes, good evening, Amanda Radigan, planning and zoning director. Um, conversations with the owners of the Cove have happened several times over the last several months. Um, it initially started as a conversation of the conversion of the apartment complex to entirely short-term rental or largely short-term rental. As we've went through this process, you've seen that a couple of letters were written by us, a couple of writings were written by Vice Sirota. Um, the, their request has changed lately, so we've gotten, well, one building or two buildings, and now the request is a small percentage. So there is no clear amount, but I will say that this did start as a request to transition apartments into short-term rental, which without all the kind of legal stuff, a short-term rental or, um, renting a place for three, four days, the way we would look at it in the code would relate more to a hotel. And a hotel type of use or a transient type of use based on their PUD is, is not permitted.
According to, the last time I spoke with the client, it was between, right now it's between 40 or 50 units that they'd like to use as short-term rentals. It's approximately 540 something unit property.
And, and I would just, you know, that's not before you this evening. If that's something they want to do, they can certainly come and talk to the city through the process. But tonight, we're just looking at, you know, the interpretation that was made with respect to, you know, the conclusion may be the same if they come back and make that request, you know, based upon what's here tonight.
That's right. There is, there is no restriction in your code as to the number of short-term rentals that we're permitted to rent.
David, what does the settlement agreement say has, because this, this goes back to, um, way back when. Um, what, what did this property agree to with the city as part of that settlement agreement?
I, I can refer you back to the settlement agreement, um, specifically on page, let's see, page three, paragraph 16, uh, says, "Trade winds in the city hereby accept and approve the master plan attached to the above-referred letter and identified as that certain master plan prepared by Kilde and Associates, drawing number 85-34, last revised on October 19th, 1986." Uh, the master plan includes a total of, and this on top of page four, a total of 500 dwelling, 520 dwelling units located on, uh, 85.2876 acres for gross density of six dwelling units per acre. And then under number five, the multifamily housing, which will be limited to two and three-story condominiums, is substantially separated by single-family homes from the single-family homes in Leisureville and Lake Boynton Estates. So there's a specific reference there to two and three-story condominiums. Uh, no reference to hotels, uh, no reference to transient lodging, short-term rental.
Right, and it, it's my understanding that these actually were supposed to be for-sale condos and not apartments at all, correct? Is that my?
I, I believe so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So here, we have a situation where we have an agreement where this neighborhood was supposed to be condominiums. Um, and instead of converting, they just continued to reside as apartments. So and David, is there, is there any reason for, for me to believe or for anything in our, um, in our documents that would, um, make that settlement agreement, um, not applicable? Um, or not able to stand up on its, you know, on its face?
No, and, and I think, I think it's an excellent question. I think that's what makes this case a little unique is that, you know, there was litigation between the prior property owner and the city. Uh, and at the time of the litigation, the parties agreed to settle it and reach an agreement as far as what the uses were that were allowed in the PUD. You know, you know, PUD is a unique type of zoning. Um, it's adopted specifically to incorporate typically larger areas so that you can regulate the types of uses, the intensity, the uses, the design, and, and those aspects of development as opposed to just doing a rezoning and a site plan. So I think it's a unique situation. The PUD, you know, as far as I can tell in my research, hasn't been, uh, amended to allow for the type of use that the applicant is looking for. Even, even 30, 30-plus years later.
Right.
I'd also add that the kind of ownership structure I do think makes this a little bit atypical. If these were all fee-simble condo ownerships, could each one in theory of those units come in and ask for a short-term rental? Possibly, but I don't think that the ordinance ever, um, saw the situation where an apartment complex would transition to a fully transient use.
Well, and, and, I mean, we, we know, um, you know, we're, you know, most, if, if it, if it would have exchanged hands to a condo situation, there would have been a condo association, there would have been some sort of board, and, and, you know, there's likely within their, um, paperwork and bylaws and everything, would, it would be prohibited to do any sort of short-term rentals, um, outside of, you know, regular rentals, so. Um, I mean, I may preserve any other questions until I hear my colleagues that, um, that's what I have for right now.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Kelly. I'm going to turn now to Commissioner Hay for questions for either party.
Um, yeah, just some comments, I guess. Um, I just have a problem with short-term vacation rentals. Um, I've heard some horror stories about, about, about them. It, it makes less long-term rentals, um, available. When you have a lot of, lot of short turns coming in, uh, which is negative to me. But another thing I, I think about is, uh, the missed, um, tax renewal. Short, as I understand it, short-term, um, renters are not, not taxed, certain cities. I believe Boynton is one of those. And so it, you know, it, it, it takes away from our increased taxes, uh, for the city as a revenue, uh, permits, business license, or all, um, items that we gain revenue from. And I, I see this being a negative, uh, in that area. So I, I, I guess from, from having said that and my whole feeling about it, um, you know, I don't support it.
And if I might just raise one other issue, um, you know, they, they did submit their request for their appeal on September 1st. And there's nothing in that September 1st letter which raises any of the issues that they're claiming here tonight uh, with respect to the city's adoption of the short-term rental ordinance in July. So from, from matter of law, I would say that if the appellant doesn't raise the issues at the time that they appeal the matter, they've, they've waived their right, so I would just backstop my prior, uh, assertions with respect to any waiver of any argument with the fact that their September 1st letter seeking the appeal didn't raise any of the issues that they're raising tonight. But thank you.
Is there, I just put a, increase their requirement in the code that requires for every issue to be raised in the appeal? And the fact is, we're raising it now.
For this short-term, um, taxes on is that, that, um, Is that, that short-term rentals are not taxed? Is that...
I believe that there are taxes that can be collected against individuals who utilize their property for short-term rentals. That's not necessarily a relationship between the city and the property owner, but I believe it's either with the county or with the state.
So within our short-term rental, there are fees that are collected in their application for a short-term rental. Taxes, however, would be with the owner of the property. So it's not necessarily taxed differently, like for property taxes, but there would be additional and annual fees for a short-term rental and the reapplication for a short-term rental license every year.
Can a short-term tax be visited regularly by a city and...
At this point in time, the city...
It opens itself up to that, right?
The city can collect a fee with respect to the regulations to register short-term rentals, but as far as a tax, that's currently preempted by the state statute.
Okay, that's all I have right now.
Thank you, Commissioner Hay. I turned out a vice mayor.
Hey, David, good to see you. Thank you. Quick question. For this property... Actually, Amanda, can you define the chronic nuisance abatement program for me?
I cannot.
Okay. Is there someone here that can?
Well, there are properties that are known to have had issues or events dealing with drugs, prostitution, crime, poor lighting, property maintenance, those types of issues that have lasted over a period of time.
Okay. Are there, so this property as a whole, or any, I guess, units within this property, are any of them under the chronic nuisance abatement program as we sit today?
It's my enders.
Okay.
I'm sorry, he just needs to be sworn in, Emily. Do you swear or affirm that the evidence that you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Adam Temple, Assistant City Manager. I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Concerning this site, is this property or any of the units on this property under the chronic nuisance abatement program with the city?
So Community Standard Staff has issued a notice and sent an agreement in accordance with our chronic nuisance ordinance. So the Community Standard Staff is currently in the process of going through a chronic nuisance abatement program with the property owners.
Okay. I think that's important to note for the record, considering in respect to some of the argument that was brought up for the short-term rental. I think we all identify and know what that ordinance was brought forward, was to eliminate that. So that being said, for me, at this point in time, I'm going to go with staff's recommendation. David, thank you, and I have no more comments at this time.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Cruz, do you have any questions or comments?
I would rather not make any comments.
All right, with that, I will entertain a motion on the floor, seeing that there is no further discussion from anyone. If you are supporting staff, you are going to uphold the decision of the city of Boynton Beach. And I would recommend that you read the drafted language, whether to uphold or to overturn it is your decision.
Make a motion, okay, so based on the competent substantial evidence presented, I move to uphold the decision of the city of Boynton Beach Planning and Zoning Director denying the use of apartments as short-term rentals at the Cove of Boynton Beach Apartments.
Second emotion.
All right, a motion has been made to uphold the decision of the city of Boynton Beach. A second was made by Commissioner Hay. Any further discussion? Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you. David, could you just briefly? Because the reason we're here is the definement of dwelling units and how how our previous code has been established. And that... What takes precedent as far as our code when it comes to dwelling units and that definition?
I would say that in this instance, which is a unique situation, because you have the PUD ordinance in place, that that specific PUD ordinance would take precedence over the general definition of dwelling unit that's in your code. So, you know, you have adopted a short-term rental ordinance that references dwelling units, but in this instance, because the PUD was already existing and it's specific to this area, I would say that that controls.
Just for the record, the PUD does not have a definition of dwelling unit within the PUD.
But it governs what this property can be used for.
And...
And on top of that, we have a settlement agreement that the Cove or the trade winds entered into with the city and agreed how that property would be used. And so while I understand, you know, where you're coming from, you know, trade winds agreed that they would stay as single-family residents and actually then further agreed that they would turn into condominiums, which they never did. So, you know, so... So my position is, you know, I agree with staff. I mean, I think there is some, you know, kind of gray area as far as, you know, the short-term rental and how we have used dwelling units as kind of that classification. But at the same time, we rely on a PUD and, in this instance, a settlement agreement that protects, you know, your residents of the Cove that their neighbors are not going to be in-and-out daily renters. And so, you know, I just wanted to kind of, you know, clarify that for... That we're, you know, that's what we're relying on, is that PUD and the settlement agreement as far as how this property, you know, that's how this property is to be used. And so I'm just, I just wanted to add those comments for the record.
Thank you so much. Is there anything else from anyone?
I just want to echo and thank you for the comments, Commissioner Kelly, and I do agree with you.
All right, thank you. A motion has been made to uphold the decision of the city of Boynton Beach, and it was made by Vice Mayor Turkin. A second was made by Commissioner Hay. I'm going to call now the vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those who oppose the motion, say no. The ayes have it. Motion passes unanimously. I want to thank everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I'm going to ask for a motion to table item 11B.
So move.
And 12, I will do that first. There's a motion to table item 11B, made by Commissioner Cruz, a second from Commissioner Hay. All those in favor of tabling item 11B, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And let me, I'm sorry, to the next meeting. Was that my understanding? Commissioner Cruz, I just wanted to make sure that was clear. All right, thank you. All those who oppose, say no. All right, the ayes have it. Motion passes unanimously. I may have a motion to table item 12A to the next meeting. We have a motion from Commissioner Kelly. Is that you? And who made the second? Multiple people. Vice Mayor Turkin made the second. All those in favor of tabling item 12A to the next meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those who oppose, say no. The ayes have it. Motion passes unanimously. If there's nothing else from anyone, may have a motion to adjourn. A motion has been made. Is there a second? A second. All those in favor to adjourn, say aye. Aye. All those who oppose, say no.
Good night, everyone.
Yes, have a good night, and thank you to all of our staff and all those who came out today.